Hello, Mother. Something smells good.
Good morning, sweetie. I'm making breakfast for you. Can you clean the bacon pan for me?
Sure thing. No, Billy, don't do it. It's bad for your pipes and bad for the environment.
Don't listen to him, Billy. Just pour it down the drain and forget about it. What's a little grease going to do?
Actually, there's a lot that grease can do to damage your home and the environment. Picture this. When you decide to pour fats, oils, or grease down the drain, you are letting those substances harden up and stick to your pipe walls, causing clogs and backups in your home that can eventually lead to expensive repairs and can also cause gross smells and a nasty situation for your neighborhood and the environment.
You can smell it.
Instead, when the substance cools down, stick it in a plastic container, make sure the lid is sealed tight, and drop it off at your nearest cooking oil recycling station in Hillsborough County. That way, you're helping the environment and saving your family money. So think about you, that new skateboard you've always wanted.
Yeah, alright.
It's a win-win for everyone.
New skateboard? Oh, yeah. Your way is definitely better than mine. Let's recycle that grease.
For more information on how you can recycle your fats, oils, or grease, visit hcflgov.net/corps.
Hey, everyone. Did you know you could watch today's meeting live and on your smart device? Head on over to the Hillsborough County Meetings channel on the YouTube app. Click Subscribe and turn on the notification bell so you can be automatically notified when Hillsborough County meetings goes live. You can also browse any of our past meetings by swiping to the left and scrolling down. All that's left to do is just to click on a video. It's that easy.
Alexa, play music from The Canoe Crew.
Are you sure?
Come again?
Wouldn't you rather find out what's happening in your community?
Of course, but how can I do that?
Simply say, "Alexa, enable Hillsborough County Newsflash Briefing", and you'll be ready to go.
Easy peasy.
Yes, Sue, it really is easy peasy.
Alexa, enable Hillsborough County Newsflash Briefing.
Hillsborough County Newsflash Briefing enabled.
Hello, Hillsborough. These are your headlines.
For your community news, simply say, "Alexa, enable Hillsborough County Newsflash Briefing."
These are the jobs you may not see every day, but just know we're working hard to make Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play. Subscribe to our YouTube page for more great county-related videos only on HTV.
Twenty seconds is all it takes for a toddler to drown. In less time than it takes to post on social media or change the laundry, a child can slip out a door and silently drown. Nearly all the children who drowned last year in the Tampa Bay area were last seen inside their home. Visit PreventNeedlessDeaths.com right now to learn more about simple steps you can take today to save a child's life.
Is your local business or organization looking to give back to the community? Help keep our roads clean by joining the Adopt a Road program administered by Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful. Keeping our roads clean is a great way for team building as well as exposure for your business. Select the road your business wants to adopt and dispatch a team to remove litter and debris. Participants will receive two signs showing their organization's name as well as safety equipment and instructions for cleaning roads. You can help keep Tampa Bay beautiful by adopting your own road today. To learn more, visit hcflgov.net/cleanhc.
Come on, kiddo. I just changed your diaper.
Yeah, throw 'em in the trash. Don't flush it.
What? What is it?
In my 25 years of plumbing, this is the worst stench I have ever smelled.
How did this happen?
You fed the monster these so-called flushable wipes.
Monster?
They call it the Clog. Two G's because it's extra gross. You see, packaging will have you believe they are safe for plumbing and flushable, but in fact, they are not. They combine with other sewage in the pipes and become... the Clog. This is the monster you created.
I didn't know.
Next time, save yourself the headache and the repair bill and throw those flushable wipes in the trash.
What? Oh my... Tammy, do you see how much this is gonna cost us?
Don't feed the Clog monster. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it.
Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District 1, Sandra Merman. Representing District 2, Ken Hagan. Representing District 3, Les Miller. Representing District 4, Stacy White. Representing District 5, Mariella Smith. Representing District 6, Pat Kemp. Representing District 7, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners meeting. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation given by Chaplain Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, during this most special time of year, I am thankful for this board, our staff, and our community stakeholders. I'm thankful for the good work that we've done and optimistic about the good work to be done as we move forward. I'm so thankful for our first responders within our community and across this state, nation, and globe. Thankful for the members of our armed forces and pray that you will guide them, comfort them, and keep them safe each and every day. I give all these thanks and ask for all these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have two commendations this morning. The first one will be given by Commissioner White.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'm here to recognize some very special volunteers in our community out of a very special community in Hillsborough County within my district, and that's, of course, the Sun City Center community. With this commendation today, we'll be celebrating the Sun City Center Emergency Squad on the occasion of their 55th anniversary. That's 55 years of saving lives in Sun City Center. Founded in 1964, the Emergency Squad has grown from 20 volunteers to a licensed basic life support unit with over 400 volunteers who operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. They answer over 5,000 calls a year, ensuring a quick response rate and safety of some of our most vulnerable residents. The great service that the Emergency Squad provides is not only a boon for the Sun City Center population, but for the entire county as they save us approximately $4.5 million per year by utilizing these amazing volunteers. So I can't begin to tell you how grateful I am to have the Emergency Squad in my district and want to thank them for their service and celebrate their 55th anniversary as we close out 2019. So at this time, I want to invite some special guests up here with me as we read this commendation into the record. We have Chief Mike Bardell, and he'll be making some comments as we bring forth the commendation. Come on up here with me. We have the Assistant Chief of Medical Education Shirley Bardell. Deputy Chief Tina Drury. Assistant Chief of Human Resources Chris McCann. Assistant Chief of IT Richard Grant. Assistant CFO Brenda Levy. Assistant Chief of Public Relations Robin Watt. Special Assistant to the Chief Noreen Schramm. We also have some of their Board of Directors members with us that I'd like to invite up. Barry McKee, Terry Blankenship, Ken Ayers, Tom Kennedy, and Kelly Coniggy. I think I've covered everyone. Is that right? Alright, excellent. Alright. So let's read this commendation into the record. And congratulations, by the way, on 55 years. And thank you all for being here and for your spirit of volunteerism. This is a commendation for the Sun City Center Emergency Squad. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize the Sun City Center Emergency Squad on the occasion of its 55th anniversary of providing high-quality emergency services to the greater Sun City Center community, a model example of neighbors helping neighbors. Founded in 1964 by Ray Watson, an early Sun City Center resident, the Sun City Center Emergency Squad originally consisted of 14 first-aiders trained by the American Red Cross. The organization dutifully has grown along with the community with more than 400 volunteers, including licensed emergency medical technicians, emergency medical responders, emergency medical responder drivers, dispatchers, and support staff on board today. Its highly-trained personnel respond to nearly 5,000 emergency calls every year from two facilities serving about 20,000 residents during the peak season. This cherished institution also offers cardiopulmonary resuscitation training to residents, yet another immensely valuable service. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend the Sun City Center Emergency Squad for its dedication to health and well-being of Sun City Center residents and congratulates the organization on its 55th anniversary. It's dated today, the 4th of December, signed by all seven of the Commissioners. Again, congratulations. Thank you. And I know you'd like to make a few comments.
Thank you. It's a great honor to represent this organization. A couple of points, as I said, there's over 400 volunteers. These people give of their own time. They don't get any pay. Even our medical director doesn't get paid. We really value our friendships that we have with the county and with Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. Anything that we ask for, we get. But the most important thing is this doesn't cost taxpayers a dime. This is all locally funded. Everything we get, everything we use, and we don't charge our residents. And they've supported it for 55 years. So thank you very much. Appreciate this.
Let's present this to you guys and do a nice picture. We'll just back up towards the diaphragm.
Should I get out of the way?
Get me out of the way.
We'll both step here.
Middle one, present it to me.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
The next commendation will be presented by Commissioner Merman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and very pleased to present this commendation today to a very dear friend of mine for many years since I was in the legislature, Mark Engelhardt. And I just want to say a few things about him. And actually, while I ask you and the group to come forward, I have Mark, of course, Engelhardt. Why don't you come forward? Dr. Kathy Moore. She's the Executive Director of the USF Florida Mental Health Institute. We call it FMHI. Linda McKinnon. Is Linda here? I don't think I see her. Jean Early and Rob Parkinson. Jean, of course, is our Hillsborough County Healthcare Services Director. And Rob is our Hillsborough County Criminal Justice and Grants Management Office Director. And of course, we have the Dean of the School here with us today also. Mark, let me just say a few words. He is a Faculty Research Associate at the University of South Florida's Department of Mental Health Law and Policy and the Director of Florida's Criminal Justice, Mental Health, and Substance Abuse Technical Assistance Center. He is one of those unique individuals who has the keen ability to bridge the divide between academic research and the implementation of best practices at the community level. Many of you know Mark. I don't think our board members are as familiar with you, Mark, but those in the fields I've mentioned know Mark for his long-term efforts to provide technical assistance and guidance to our counties, of course, our healthcare, behavioral health task force, our public safety coordinating council. However, that really is just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to his contributions to behavioral health, criminal justice, and social services fields. Although Mark's accomplishments are too numerous to cite here, I'd like to highlight a few. He has been a consultant, evaluator, principal investigator, co-principal investigator on numerous SAMPA grants. That's your substance abuse and mental health services grants. And that covered the areas of mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, veteran services, and criminal justice system improvement. He served as Florida's Olmsted Grant Coordinator to build statewide coalitions for community-based care and supportive housing for persons with mental illness. He's an Associated Faculty of the National Center on Homelessness Among Veterans, and he does participate on our Suicide Prevention Committee for the Veteran Services. He conducted a national review of the HUD-VASH Permanent Supportive Housing Program for veterans, and he has been a champion of Housing First philosophies across the country. I mean, he is known by many throughout the whole country, not just Hillsborough County. So I'm so pleased to present this to you, and I'd like to read this commendation. It says, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Mark Engelhardt on his retirement from the University of South Florida, expresses profound appreciation for his 44-year career developing services systems and policies to serve and protect the communities most vulnerable. As a Director of Florida's Criminal Justice, Mental Health, and Substance Abuse Technical Assistance Center and a Faculty Research Associate at the USF Department of Mental Health Law and Policy", as a lot of words. "Mr. Engelhardt has played a pivotal role in improving the lives of people experiencing mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, and criminal justice system involvement. Mr. Engelhardt's many notable achievements include advancing the implementation of the Housing First Model, which we have implemented here in this county, supporting the development of innovative behavioral healthcare system designs, conducting a national review of the HUD-VASH program, and disseminating best practices across the country, providing technical assistance to Hillsborough's Public Safety Coordinating Council and our Behavioral Healthcare Task Force. He is a champion for people who need it." He is a champion for people who need it the most. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Mark Engelhardt for his work on behalf of Hillsborough County's most vulnerable people, and wishes him Godspeed in his retirement." And I'm so pleased to give this to you. I'd love for you to say it in words.
Well, thanks, Commissioner Merman. We have known each other a long time. I think she's been on every one of my boards over the years. I'm really honored to be here, and I just want to say that this goes all the way back to the early development of the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan, and Jean's the administrator of it. And I recall actually running the numbers back then, and I'll just share that, we estimated it would cost about $40 million in 1991 to meet the needs of people with mental illness in Hillsborough County. I don't know where that is today, but it has been moving forward. And, and I do want to commend the, the Board of County Commissioners here today for your leadership in getting behind the healthcare plan. I, I have seen an enormous growth in the past five years. It's been, it's been unbelievable what's happened here. The other thing is, I get around the state, I get around the country, and Hillsborough is always held up as the innovator. Always. If there's a pilot project, it's here in Hillsborough. It's replicated. The central receiving system that was established here in 1996 was the model for all of the state of Florida. If you go around the state, you, you'll see the template of Hillsborough County in all of those other county plans. So, it's not just Hillsboro, it's just not Florida. I can name seven other states that have replicated this model. I won't do that now. But in any event, I just want to say thanks. I, I guess, and lastly, is, is a theme, because I know the word Housing First is thrown around a lot, and I talked to the founder this week, as a matter of fact, Sam Sembrares. I, I just want to clarify, Housing First is a clinical model. A lot of people get confused that it's just about putting people in housing. It's about supports. And even this morning, Tampa Bay Times had two articles in the front page. It had one on homelessness and another one on behavioral healthcare. And, and if you read the article on homelessness, what you read is support services. And the last thing I'll say is that people recover at home. They don't recover in jail. They don't recover in CSU's and in detox, although those are life-saving places. But they really recover at home, and that's where the focus has got to be. So, thanks very much.
Commissioner Merman, Commissioner Merman, before we do that, Commissioner Hagan wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Merman, for recognizing Mark. Congratulations, Mark, on your much-deserved retirement. I concur with everything Commissioner Merman stated, particularly part about being a champion for those who need it the most. Of course, we know each other in a different capacity, one with about playing golf and, and watching sports. But even in that environment, it's been quite obvious how passionate you are about helping those who struggle with mental illness, substance abuse, and, and homelessness. I remember the time that you educated me on the Needle Exchange Program. What struck me was not how, how, how much you understood and how educated you were on the topic, but how you did not come across wonkish or professor-like. And I imagine that's one of the reasons why you've been so successful. And I believe Commissioner Merman referenced that, but undoubtedly, USF's going to miss your expertise, Hillsborough County's going to miss your expertise, but I know that you're not finished helping those in need. And, and I look, with additional time you're going to have now, I look forward to playing more golf with you. So, congratulations again on your, on your retirement.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I don't know of your work, but have learned this morning, and I just want to thank you for that, but also, I just want to say your comments were so spot-on about the articles this morning, just in terms of recognizing and, and Housing First and all that. But, and, and one of the reasons I first hit my button is because it just made me think a lot this morning about Phyllis Buzansky, and I just wanted to recognize her and her leadership in our healthcare program and bringing it to this county. And it's been something that we, as you say, has been recognized around the nation, and we've been very, very proud of. But I just, I just kept thinking about Phyllis, and so I, I just wanted to acknowledge that also.
Okay.
Take pictures. Back up.
Which way?
Back up.
Here we are.
I don't think they're going to take the picture on the back.
I'm sure it's, I need to be in the front of the baseball bat.
Yes, morning, Commissioners. We have a few changes here this morning off the agenda, item F6. Commissioner Overman's item, special appearance by Colonel James Bradford of the Sheriff's Office regarding the establishment of the County Commission on Human Trafficking. This is related to item B1. We have one deferral, which is A53, which is being deferred to a date to be determined. That's requesting a public hearing to be scheduled January 8th, 2020, to adopt a resolution for the Water Resource Department. Revisions, corrections to the agenda. On your addendum, A28 is listed as one of the revisions. It should actually be A30. That was a Scrivener's error, so A30 is the first revision, and that's simply a spelling error, looks like. The word statute instead of statue. The second revision is B1, and that's simply to designate it as a time certain, which is again related to F6. G1, removing the time certain there. We have two items removed from consent for discussion. A2 was removed by Commissioner Overman. This is authorizing the Affordable Housing Services Department to provide a draft of the HOPE Affordable Housing Biennial Plan for public comment, and also schedule a public hearing on December 18th, 2019 to receive additional public comment. That was pulled by Commissioner Overman for discussion. A14 is pulled by Commissioner Kemp for discussion. It's the 2020 meeting schedule for the Board of County Commissioners. We have a number of public hearings, starting at 10:00 AM. D1 is final public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance providing for a 270-day moratorium related to applications for rezonings and planned development zonings for RP2, future land designations. D2 is the same, but related to the Wyomama Village RP2. D3 is a second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportion share agreement with the School Board and Starlight Homes Florida LLC. D4 is the first public hearing for the designation of a brownfield area at a parcel located at the southwest intersection of 16th Avenue Southeast and 12th Street Southeast and Ruskin. That's related to item B3. B3 is announcing the community meeting on December 11th to, at 6:00 PM to discuss or receive input on the brownfield designation. D5 is a second public hearing to adopt a resolution regarding an additional brownfield area parcel located at 5321 Hartford Street in Tampa. Final public hearing, D6, is to approve a resolution establishing the Board's intent to use the Uniform Method of Collection for Levy Collection Enforcement of Non-Ad Felorum Assessments for Property Located Within Established Impact Fee Assessment Units. 10:30, item F5, which is Commissioner Merman's item, that's to hear a presentation from Dr. John Curran, Chair of the Hillsborough County Healthcare Advisory Board. 10:45 is B5, that's the Internal Auditor's Calendar Year 2020 Audit Plan. 11:00 AM, two items. B1 is, as I mentioned earlier, adopting a resolution establishing the county's Commission on Human Trafficking. And F6, which is the appearance by Colonel James Bradford of the Sheriff's Office regarding the same issue. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes.
Have most approved the changes to the agenda? Second. Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White to approve the changes to the agenda. Senior, for the discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to, two, five to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should, should complete the electronic request for public comment form located at the sign-up table inside the Boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Three minutes allowed for each speaker. Our first two speakers are Candy Olsen, followed by Brian Brayley. The Honorable Candy Olsen.
Thank you. Good morning. This morning, I'm here on behalf of The Chislers, which is a support group for the Plant Hotel, also known as Plant Hall at the University of Tampa. We want to thank you for your historic preservation grant, which is item A21 on today's agenda. It's a 100-year-old building. It's three, it's a quarter of a million square feet. It's in really good shape for a 100-year-old building, but as a 100-year-old building, it needs constant attention and care. And over the years, we've done what I call the ultimate environmental project. We take things that people no longer want or can no longer use. We have one gigundus garage sale and sell those things to people who do want them and can use them. And we take that money and match funds from you and others to restore the foundations, re-point the bricks, all the really non-exciting but really important things that keep buildings still standing. Your staff has been wonderful. I particularly want to thank Rebecca Hessenger and June Metcalf. They've been patient, clear, walked us through the process. I want to thank the volunteers who serve on the panel. I would not want to have that job, but we are very grateful for your support. We've spent over $9 million on this work, most of it in this county with local businesses, so it really is economic development. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Brian Brayley, followed by Kevin Leary.
Good morning. My name is Brian Brayley, and I'm here representing HOPE, the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. I was in Maine when you all voted to establish the HOPE Affordable Housing Act that provides for $10 million a year for affordable housing. And I know you couldn't hear me from way up there, but when I got the news, I was cheering. What a big step this represents for addressing the affordable housing need, and we want to thank the Commission once again for doing this. As many of you know, since HOPE first began to raise this issue six years ago, it consistently asked the county to establish an affordable housing fund of at least $10 million to create more decent, safe, and affordable housing for working families and seniors at the very low incomes of 50% AMI and below, where housing needs are the greatest. Now that these dollars have been approved, we believe that it's reasonable to expect that at least half of these funds will be directed to those in the very low-income category. These families should not be a marginal element of the Affordable Housing Biennial Plan. In seeking this funding, we wanted to increase the share of funds that are being spent on housing for families with very low incomes, for they have been very underserved in the previously existing affordable housing funds. We also shared these concerns this past Monday with your Affordable Housing Advisory Board. We want the HOPE Affordable Biennial Housing Plan to be a statement that in this plan at least, the county is intending to more adequately address the needs of this underserved, very-low-income population. We do, however, want to be clear that we are not asking that every development or every project be at the 50% AMI below and below, but we are asking that at least half of the local affordable housing funds that have been approved for 2020 and 21 budgets be spent on housing for very low income, regardless of how the Affordable Housing Services Department decides to strategize that. Okay? So, in closing, we, you know, reexpress our appreciation to the county, to the county for approving these funds for affordable housing, and ask that you grant the HOPE request that the two-year HOPE Affordable Housing Biennial Plan requires that half of the funds are spent on housing for families in the very low income at 50% AMI and below. Thank you again for giving this your careful consideration.
Thank you. Kevin Leary, followed by Elise Batzel. Kevin Leary? Is Kevin here? Okay. Elise Batzel, followed by Connie Burton.
Good morning, Elise Batzel, with Sterns Weaver, 401 East Jackson, Suite 2100. I am also here this morning to talk about item A2, which is the Affordable Housing Biennial Plan. The Affordable Housing Plan that you have proposed focuses a lot on new construction rather than allocating resources towards existing projects. As you may or may not know, during the recession that began in 2008, the existing affordable housing projects in Hillsborough County, many of them were unable to raise rents to keep up with increased expenses. The result of this is that it's caused various affordable housing owners and these projects to seek new funding from institutional lenders in order to do things like re-roof, have new playground equipment, and pave. As part of the plan, we encourage you to look at your existing loan forgiveness and restructuring policy for these HOPE programs, to consider forgiving accrued interest that was put in place during the 90s because of a tax law that doesn't exist anymore. These accrued interest payments aren't needed under the current tax law, and they're preventing existing affordable housing developers to be able to go out to institutional lenders and get the funding that they need for capital repairs in their existing projects. Also, by allowing existing deals to be restructured, it doesn't cost us anything right now. This is accrued interest that may or may not be collected in 30 years, and so it isn't really impacting our budget immediately. In addition, we think it's also important that Hillsborough County encourages developers, new developers, and existing developers to look at taking advantage of the federal income averaging rules. I've learned way too much about this in the last few months, but it basically allows developers to set aside units at lower than 60%, some 40s and some 50s, but it also allows them to have higher than 60%. So, they are able to receive, borrow the same first mortgage amounts as long as the total rent still averaged out to 60% AMI. So, we ought to look at that as part of the plan as well. In, in sum, really, we are encouraging you to look at keeping a focus on preserving existing units. We're a little bit worried that we focus so much on new production, that we're going to lose more units in old production because of the way that we're structured today, that we're not going to be able to even keep up with our affordable housing units with new projects. So, thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Connie Burton, followed by Carol Rensum.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to really express appreciation that this body has listened to the community. A six-year haul of helping to develop the HOPE Affordable Housing Plan is a breath of fresh air and good news to a community and a population that have really been in wait. We here, like, for the last couple of years, not fully understanding the effects of gentrification, but feeling it, understanding that some would use it to increase value in neighborhoods as we upgrade properties and bring about new amenities, but for many in the community has been, the gentrification has meant forced removal. We're thankful to even the leadership of your housing director in the way in which she understands how to balance this funding, that we don't want it to be gobbled up by just one particular entity, but that when we are having issues in rehab in our community of the elderly that cannot afford out-of-pocket the ability of having those resources available, looking at new and creative ideas for the housing market, as well as addressing the very vulnerable. You know, we know that this market is moving fast, but we also see that You know, we know that this market is moving fast, but we also see that wages is not keeping up. And so, I am in hope that other institutions will look to your leadership, that when we are having the development community, developers come into this community, they will look at Hillsborough County and look at this set aside and see how they can come on board. We just cannot keep pushing this issue up under the rug as if it's going to go away. But again, thanks to the leadership of HOPE, thanks to your leadership for listening, and again, thanks to the Director of the Affordable Housing Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Ransom followed by Chloe Coney.
Good morning. My name is Carol Ransom. I'm here this morning to, I guess, to follow through with the rest of the group and say thank you. Thank you for addressing these families here in Hillsborough County. As we strive to become a great city and obtaining Super Bowl and income brackets far exceeding what was, what was started out to be, we move into a phase where we also have people who, whose income is not increasing, still at a minimum wage, who are still looking for the American dream, which is home ownership. We applaud HOPE Organization for not giving up that dream. We applaud you for your urgent need, seeing that need expressed by community and making a move upon it. I also, one of the other things I want to speak about, oh, and Ms. Cheryl Howell, don't let me forget her. She has been very instrumental in communicating with community. She's at the ground, grassroots level, speaking to and listening to, actively listening to people from our community. So, I think, you know, when we don't get things right, it's always an uproar and raising, but we need to come in when you get things right to say thank you. Also, on your agenda this morning, I see where you are addressing the subject of human and sex trafficking. As we applaud the city moving forward with the needs, meeting the needs of homelessness, I also express the need for you to take a closer look at where we sit in Hillsborough County as far as trafficking, human, and sex. We are number one capital of strip clubs in the United States, which is not something that we want to be commended for. That is the darker side of life. And anytime we count the number of people that come into a strip club, it's by traffic. The owner of the club goes to the door and he says, "How many people came through the door tonight?" That's traffic. So, when we see the girls on the pole or the people in the community, we think that it's just on TV, but this is real life. We have young people, elementary, middle-school girls, who believe that stripping is a real occupation. We have got to get a handle on it. And I want to thank you this morning for addressing that need. I see it's on the agenda, a resolution, a proclamation, but there's going to be a discussion on trafficking of humans and sex. And we thank you for taking a look at this, a closer look at this, because that's one of those things Hillsborough County probably does not want to be known for, and that's the capital of trafficking. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chloe Coney followed by Von Beal.
Good morning, County Commissioners. I'm Chloe Coney, a woman that wear many hats. I want to come and also say special thank you for your leadership, County Commissioner, for passing the HOPE Affordable Housing Act, Local Affordable Housing Plan. We know Sharon Street is sitting here with a committee, and they have been relentless. I've been on the committee to getting this ten million dollars passed that we so desperately need. I think most of you know that I was the founder of CDC in the early nineteen nineties. We built affordable multifamily housing, Oswald Landing on, in Osborne Avenue, and we did that, CDC, with Bank of America CDC. And those are the very first apartments that were built, and again, that filled up very quickly when people thought, Commissioner Miller, that nobody wanted to move to East Tampa. We, we made sure they understood that, and then Bev and Heights and other apartments. And I know CDC has built over these twenty-seven years, not only over a hundred single-family homes with multifamily. I'm saying that because we know firsthand the impact of affordable housing. Last year, I think most of you attend CDC luncheon, and my son Ernest Coney had the guest speaker, Steve Gloday. He was the CEO of Coalition of Nonprofit Housing and Economic Development that managed over a hundred-million-dollar housing trust fund in DC. And he, like he says, they were able to leverage it not only from the city, but from others that will come in and invest in affordable housing, all kind of funding. I hope that Hillsborough County gets to that point because we know we need affordable housing. Again, special thanks to you County Commissioners for your leadership. One concern I do have, and I'm so glad that we are looking at the very poor, fifty percent, but as we also look at eighty percent AMI, I want to make sure that we don't box ourselves in when we go to these fundings, and they have all these stringent requirements, and we can't get housing for really hardly anybody, because we're going to have to leverage this money. This, this is a drop in the bucket, like I said, with ten, ten million. And I love, and again, I was part of the committee, that we did focus on fifty percent. But again, I want to make sure we don't box ourselves in and not get additional funding. Your Housing Manager, Cheryl, is just awesome. She's out in the community. She's making sure that she meets with everybody, explaining everything. And again, your leadership must be, I mean, just committed. I want to say thank you. I've been doing this too long, y'all, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Von Beal.
Hey, good morning. My name is Von Beal. I'm with the Florida Rights Restoration. First of all, I want to just thank you, HOPE, for getting the ten million dollars for the housing, and I want to thank the Director, Cheryl Howell, for just working hard to really get this done. I'm out in the community a lot, talking to returning citizens and just citizens out there in the community. And housing is a big issue. A lot of returning citizens feel they're left out, they can't get housing because of their record. So, I'm really thankful that HOPE came up with the ten million where we can do affordable housing for the low income. Also, the progress for the regentification, I thank y'all for that. People don't have to leave their communities. We're doing something in the communities where people can stay in their communities. And also, last, I have a concern, which is putting it in one developer's hand. I think we can get a lot more done if we use multiple developers, and I just want to thank y'all for listening, and we're getting something done in Hillsborough County, and we're going forward to be the number one cities in Florida.
Thank you. We now move to those who want to speak on off-the-agenda items, starting with Pamela Sell followed by Karen Gagliardi.
I am Pamela Sell, and I live in District Four, and I'm here to talk about our area at Ambleside Drive and Clement Pride. With all the new development that's being built out there, we have this huge issue, people are not stopping. We have a public, a park right next to it, and I have tape recording of actual cars just flying by. They do not stop. We have been in contact with Public Works, and they're supposed to be doing a traffic survey. We've been waiting over a year for this, and it's just getting worse, so I'm here to ask you for your help and hope that when they do come, we are asking for either a roundabout to be put in or a public stoplight. It's just, it's gotten worse, and that's what I'm here for, is just trying to help our, you know, South Fork down in the Riverview areas, closer to Apollo Beach area, but it's just getting really bad. And I know you got, you know, we have a lot of things going on up in this part of Hillsborough, but please don't forget us lonely ones that live way down in the south, because with all the development, it's getting worse, traffic is horrible, there's accidents all the time, nobody's stopping. We have less police officers that are down in our area patrolling, so I'm just, I hope that you listen and give us some help down there, District Four. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you want, the, the person in charge of Public Works is in the back there. He'd be happy to let you know.
Mr. Lyons.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. And Mr. Merrill, will you brief my office on what's going on with respect to studies, plans, what have you? Thank you.
Karen Gagliardi followed by John Chapman.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm here today, Karen Gagliardi, to ask our County Commissioners as the Coordinator for our Neighborhood Watch program, just to let you know about the outrageous amount of wild hogs, boars, piglets, gilt, sows that are infesting the South Fork community. By one trapper's estimate, we have over a hundred that have just come into the community within the last two months. Due to all of Hillsborough County-approved building, the high school, new subdivisions, expansion of roadways, three oh one and Big Bend, just to name a few, this has taken up the green space of these invasive animals. These invasive animals have now chosen the South Fork community green space as their home. To start, I asked the following offices, what's the protocol for new construction, contractors, removal, to re-home invasive animals? I called up the Office of our County Commissioners, Hillsborough County at Your Service, Hillsborough County Liaison Office, Fish Game Wildlife, and the Southwest Water District. I was directed to many, it's like a dog chasing my tail. I asked, secondly, if there was a grant that the Neighborhood Watch could ask for to assist the massive amount of hundreds, at least a hundred, of these invasive pigs over our twenty-nine ponds. They're on the pond banks. It's now become a health issue with their feces all around the ponds. To my surprise, there was not a protocol for either, and now the South Fork community is tasked with the cost of removal and repair from our communities, from our community of these invasive hogs. If there's not something that's already in consideration for building new homes, where something is done to find new homes or whatever is done with the hogs, I, I'm trying to, as Neighborhood, the Coordinator for Neighborhood Watch, to help the community, help you come to a solution for this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill, is there, I don't know if we have a department that would take care of that, but is there some way we can work with the state maybe to, the Fish and Wildlife Department, whatever they call that department, to look at that? Or?
Yeah, we, so we have arrangements with trappers on our ELAB property, so I'll ask Forest Turberville to follow up, and maybe there's some joint arrangement that we can work with the state. I mean, I'm assuming this is all happening on private property. I mean, I hear what she's saying, but I don't, I mean, I, there's no way to prove that development is what's causing it. It may be, but, so, we'd need to get permission, which I'm assuming they'd give us, to go on private property, but that would be one way to do it, and just use existing contracts that we have to remove the pigs, I guess.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, I just want to make, inform the board that these feral hogs are, like she said, they're an invasive species. They're very destructive. It's like the pythons in the Everglades or, or Brazilian pepper, but these hogs, they don't belong here. They're, they're not native species to, to our county, and they act like little bulldozers tearing up the landscape. They can be, and they can get out of hand very quickly if they're not controlled. So, I, I too would like to stay in the loop of, of what can be done. That's, it's been a, an increasing problem.
Dexter Barge is in the back. He can talk with, with the lady and...
Thank you, thank you, Dexter. All right, John Chapman followed by Ray Reed.
I'm here today to raise concerns about rezoning of land. Florida's Community Planning Act gives this board the responsibility to put in place a comprehensive planning program. The statute requires the plan should be enforced by ordinances and must ensure property owners be free from actions by others which would harm their property. I believe this board needs to review rezoning rules to avoid adjoining incompatible planned uses. In two thousand twelve, this board approved a rezoning application in the middle of Carwood. It related to just over forty acres of land. All but one acre of the vacant land was rezoned agricultural, from agricultural to residential, and the rezoning was approved, it was ruled the surrounding land use was compatible. The small, less than one-acre out parcel retained zoning for the stated purpose of continuing to run an agricultural stand. This rezoning decision failed to consider the incompatible, compatibility between that and the new residential land. I bought my home in May two thousand fourteen, and for four years lived there happily. That was until the nineteenth of March two thousand eighteen. On that day, Lawrence Properties began using a huge hydroponic greenhouse built late in two thousand seventeen. It was built less than twenty foot from the property line and has two large extractor fans that never go off, generating noise inside the house that penetrates not only the garden but inside our home. For twenty months, we've slept in our front bedroom. The last, the first day of operation, I reached out to Lawrence about the issue, but he did not care. He, I then, in a state of panic, asked code enforcement if, as Lawrence had told me, that it was exempt from all building code. Lawrence had lied, not only about his assertion he was exempt, but he didn't have a permit to continue to run his agricultural stand, which even by the Department of Agriculture is now classified as a convenience store. I'm here to warn the board that any future rezoning should take into account incompatible land uses. I do not want any citizen to endure what I have continued to endure for twenty months. Despite the code enforcement finding this business guilty, this business every day increasingly targets us. In addition, now they drive heavy machinery behind the property. Why now? Why am I here today? The reason was last week, just as my family arrived in my home to celebrate Thanksgiving, Lawrence placed roosters behind the back wall. The result is, at five AM, we're woken up every twenty seconds. When you have incompatible uses, I really think when you've got that combined with a landowner without one ounce of human decency, you see why I think carefully, careful consideration needs to be made when agriculture sits next to residential land. I have content here that I'd love the board to see in terms of videos, just so you understand, it's really hard to describe the issue in simply three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Merrill, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, for coming here today. We have been working with you for quite some time because this issue is in front of the Value Adjustment Board, and we have called the gentleman he refers to in front of our board, and he assured us that he was fixing the problem, and he did not, and he did not speak the truth to our board. Unfortunately, it is in the court system right now, and we have attempted to find the gentleman. I'm just kind of giving you a synopsis, to find the gentleman, and he goes to court, and the judge throws out our ability to find him. I mean, it, it's just a travesty of so many, but for this man to put roosters behind his house deliberately on Thanksgiving Day is unconscionable. And I, at this point, I just, I feel like our hands are tied in so many ways, but I appreciate you coming here because you are darn right. Residential next to agriculture can really bring a lot of problems. But I am so sorry that you've had to go through this, especially over the holiday season. You've been going through it for two years. I appeal to all of you to, a short, watching the short video, you will say nobody should have to endure what he endures. But Ron Spiller and his team, we've been in my office, coming up with plans, trying to figure out a way to help this gentleman. It's not just him, it's the whole neighborhood. And so, but what happened is, is because he has a green belt, the green belt is protecting his property tax abatement. So, anyway, we will keep working on this, and I know we're waiting for another decision out of Circuit Court, and we'll, we'll just keep working at till we get justice for you.
Thank you, thank you. Ray Reed, followed by Cindy Baker.
Ray Reed, 1421 Hilton Place, Tampa, Florida, District 3. I want to first apologize for the last time I was in front of you if I came across as being a little testy and upset. I'm not a good poker player, but I should have been a little more calm. And I would like today to introduce you to six persons who are not in your current inventory of properties, but they are buried at what was the county poor farm, which ran 22nd to 30th Street, Hillsborough to Hannah. And there is an October 10, 1950 board motion, and a follow-up November 10, 1950 rebuttal from the county home and hospital about the burials along the county highway, and that can only be Hillsborough Avenue. And since there was a white cemetery up until 1950 along 22nd, and as of October 11, 1950, with Henry Hadley, who was a black male, going in the new cemetery, which backs up to the Baker Act facility, that can only lead one conclusion as to what is along Hillsborough Avenue. And I'd like to introduce you to six folks who are still there. Roy Franklin Watson, aged 23 months. He was buried July 10, 1939, at the county cemetery by Ray Williams. He was up visiting with his family, and unfortunately, got into a bottle of lye and died at their home that they were visiting. A woman named Aunt Maria, who died and was buried the same day, July 31, 1917. She was about 90 years old. She was a guest of the county's nursing home-esque facility. No one knew her last name, and she would have been a slave for over 40 years. Robert Moore, 74-year-old widower from Citrus Park, who chose to die with his dignity intact rather than becoming a ward of the county. He developed gangrene after a log, fell on at work, and he would have to have his left leg amputated, which would render him basically an indigent. He chose a most horrific death, dying of gangrene, rather than having his leg amputated at the county hospital. Ramon Marino and Leroy Colmer, ages 30 and 19 respectively, prisoners of the sheriff but were swimming in the Hillsborough River and drowned. Their death certificate signed by Justice of the Peace, not by a physician. And Hazel Jones, a 42-year-old St. Petersburg resident, who was beaten over the head with a carjack and thrown from a moving car on Bay Shore Boulevard at Howard Avenue. She was buried in the county poor farm on May 1, 1927, by J.L. Reed. I do want to stress, I am no relation to that Reed, in order I wish to be.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, thank you. Cindy Baker.
Speaking in forums like this, people advise you to keep emotions out of it. Come with statistics and numbers, don't sound like a bleeding heart. Today, I am ignoring that valid advice and unapologetically pleading to you as an animal advocate. The incredible story of the 300 small dogs last month touched the hearts of the community. Numbers and statistics were tossed out of the window, and the Hillsborough County Pet Resource Center pleaded to people's hearts. Scott Travataski developed an ingenious marketing plan to adopt them. He emphasized their story and made sure that each applicant was worthy of the new pet. Every lottery applicant was required to fill out an application, listing necessary basics of what would make them a good choice to hand over the responsibility of a living, breathing being. Required was a commitment to not sell the dogs for at least three years, to stop flipping them on Craigslist for a profit. For the very first time in several years, they were not statistics, they were sentient beings. Applicants happily agreed to a home visit. These are all the very same steps that Scott threw away a few years back, and said they were obstructive to his adoption numbers. It began the era, the end of the era of no bad adoptions. Yet, with these small steps in place, on one single day, over 300 dogs were successfully and responsibly adopted, and 1,000 people were on a waiting list that didn't receive one of these valuable commodities. Because by valuing a life, you bring up the perceived value of that life, and by devaluing life, you are sending a message to the people in the county that these lives are worthless. Yes, I might be a bleeding heart, but without hearts and emotions in this particular field, it's purely a numbers game, and you're given manipulated numbers. The director hands you those manipulated numbers to maintain his job, earn the ever-desirable bonus and raise. Scott was able to create this marketing plan for these sick, hoarded, unsocialized dogs, many of whom died in their kennels or were later returned. And if that was possible, then he can devise a marketing plan for the now 298 dogs sitting on death row. It's his job, and it's in your power to demand this. We have free, proven ways to help. He won't listen to us. I hope that you will. Give me a call. Thank you, Commissioners.
Angela Malone, followed by Buddy Harwell.
Distinguished Commissioners, my name is Angela Malone. Thank you for granting me the privilege to address you here and now. For the next few minutes, I humbly request, and would greatly appreciate it, if you would kindly set aside any devices or any other items which may distract you. Please clear your mind of all other thoughts and grant me your full, undivided attention. I'm here to speak on behalf of those who have no voice. The trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release pilot program, which will be referred to as TNVR, was initiated to curb the feral cat population. Cats admitted to the program had to be, one, healthy, two, feral, and three, at least six months of age. These cats were sterilized, vaccinated, one ear clipped, then released to a caregiver or near the vicinity where it was captured. The program has changed behind closed doors without a public forum. Unfortunately, kittens weighing as little as three pounds are being admitted to the program. Sick cats are being admitted into the program. These cats are also released to people, to non-caregivers. They're just released nearby, and nobody's monitoring these cats whatsoever. Post-operative sick cats and extremely young kittens are already at risk for dying. Releasing them to an environment where they can't provide for themselves, eat, protect themselves, is a death sentence. It appears these unqualified cats and kittens are being admitted into the program to inflate its rate of success and number of live releases. But to what end? According to a report, a cat with a clipped ear contracted rabies and bit a person. If the infected cat's ear was clipped, that's a clear indication that that cat should have been vaccinated. Who's monitoring this program? Who's overseeing this program? These are issues that should give one pause. There are three questions I'd like you to consider and try to answer. Is there sufficient documentation to identify a cat admitted into the program? Is there sufficient documentation of where a cat lives when admitted into the program? Is there sufficient documentation to support the services that are actually performed? If these questions can't be answered, there's cause for concern. The TNVR program was approved by this board, which makes it accountable. Thank you.
Buddy Harwell, followed by James Franklin.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Buddy Harwell, here for Baum Gibsonton and Hillsborough County. First of all, I'd like to invite every one of you to Baum Civic Center, Monday night, 6:30 for Christmas tree lighting party, or second annual one. Last year didn't go so good, all the ornaments and stuff were stolen by the next morning. But you know we don't give up easily in Baum. So, I hope you had a chance to look at the YouTube video, Losing Ground. The three minutes I have, we're going to lose nine acres of farmland. This video states, farmland is the most sought after in the country. Main reasons, it's already cleared, it's flat, it's cheaper by the acre, usually outside the urban service area. So do I have to ask, why do the houses cost the same as the ones inside the urban service area? Where's the affordable housing? And not the $200,000 affordable housings? If you insist on building outside the urban service area, you should double or triple the fees. They want to play, they need to pay. Last month, November 6, 205, Commissioner Miller stated that this state depends on tourism and agriculture. And agriculture is a big business in the state, and if we ever decide to get out of agriculture, we would be in big trouble. 305, Commissioner Merman, let's talk about wastewater. Says in two years, South County could be low on pressure. Three to four years, we could be out of water. Yet we keep allowing these big developments without solving the problem. Are you going to be the board that causes the problem, or are you going to be the board that fixes it? You stated we can't build a wall. Can we at least build a toll booth, charge a sunshine fee, see if we can offset some of these impacts? Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker of the morning, Mr. James Franklin.
Good morning, Commissioners. James Franklin, beautiful downtown Baum. I'm going to hit on the same thing I did a month ago. I think when the big developers come in, seems like we can't stop them, when they're going to develop next to properties that homes are built on, been built on for 30, 40, 50 years, somehow, the Commissioners need to get together, and the homeowners next to these new developments should have some kind of a bill of rights, something that tells them they should get 250-foot setback. They should get some kind of water runoff that's going to run off on their property when they build everything up around them, something that guarantees and tells them in print what their rights are, because right now, we're all kind of lost. And we can't hire the suits that the developers can, that know everything about this, so we're kind of, we're under the gun. And that 250-foot setback, if the homeowner doesn't get that setback, the developer should have to pay him what that 250-foot property is all the way around them. Boy, that'd slow it down, wouldn't it? And that needs to be retroactive about five years. That would shake them up. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close our public hearing portion of the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Merman, and my companion, Mr. White, to approve the consent agenda. Since further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Mr. Merrill.
Takes us to your public hearing, starting with D1.
Good morning, Commissioners. Johanna Lundgren, Assistant County Attorney. This is the final public hearing and consideration of adoption of the ordinance providing for a 270-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications for rezonings and planned development zoning modifications within a portion of the residential Plan 2, future land use category, that would increase the number of allowable residential units or non-residential square footage and/or reduce required buffers unless the reduction is provided for connectivity to adjacent property or rights of way. And this is a public hearing, a vote is required for adoption of the ordinance today.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, I have six people that have signed to speak. The first person is Glenn Soper, followed by Buddy Harwell.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Glenn Soper. Back in 1999, my wife and I decided to buy some land out in the Riverview/Fishhawk area, quite a bit of land. I had a vision before Fishhawk was there, and now we have decided that possibly we're going to retire here soon, so we're getting our land rezoned. Back in July, I'm now in the process of rezoning, I get this moratorium in place, where we can't move on, can't rezone in R2. All of the, all of the property around me is already all developed. So I proposed to the county commissioners last month, possibly doing something to where you can move the boundary lines to the Baum area where it's affected with the traffic, because the Riverview area is pretty much all built out. There are very few parcels left. And you guys did a vote on it, I think it was four to three, or what have you. I am, I am here to let you know that I would like to see the continuation of the traffic being redone. Obviously, it is a problem, but it's a problem everywhere you go in Tampa. It's not just this little area. So, you know, I mean, it took me 20 minutes to get off the crosstown today. But the bottom line is, if you would consider moving the boundary lines to the Baum-Waimama area, it's specifically in zip codes, when I bought my land, I bought it in Riverview, Florida. I did not buy it in Fishhawk. Fishhawk wasn't even there. So if you can consider moving it to where it doesn't affect, we have water and sewer right outside of our property lines. I can do my RP2, which I'm doing under the county laws, but now you all are telling me that possibly I can't. And I pay taxes on that land. And I would just like to see the county commissioners maybe agree in moving it to the areas where it's needed in zoning. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Buddy Harwell, followed by Jennifer Motsinger.
Buddy Harwell again. Like to ask Commissioner White to reconsider his motion last time for pulling out everything north of the Baum area. The boyette pieces that you talked about, it will impact the Baum area. Remember, the electricity and water and automobiles takes the path of least resistance. It will flow north, south into our area. You asked us to help with the, to resolve the RP2 plan, give us a chance. Let us see if we can work this out. I'm sure we can. So, at least everything outside the urban service area, and leave Fishhawk out of it. But as far as the boyette area, I mean, that's right next door to us. That should be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Motsinger, followed by Bill O'Brien.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Motsinger, and I am proud to represent the people who build the American home dream of homeownership, the Tampa Bay Builders Association. So, as I'm talking to you this morning, I cannot help but recall the first county commission I ever attended, which was over 20 years ago. It was about a building moratorium, and as I'm watching all the construction trucks kind of circle around this building, I remember hearing an emotional commissioner speaking about the moratorium, and she said, "Don't tell me that it's raining when it's just peeing on my leg." And I was absolutely shocked. I was shocked, but that was her point. Her point was to be passionate and to evoke a certain type of goal, and that goal was to stop growth. And so, I watched her for many years as a commissioner, and the staff was absolutely terrified of her, and I made a decision that when I took over the association, and I have done that for the last 10 years, I wasn't going to be like that, and I was not going to be combative. I was going to be someone who treated people professionally and with respect to solve problems. And I have been at every table, of every meeting, of every discussion. I have worked with the staff, I've worked with all of you, and we've worked with the community to address problems. Every single time you have asked for money, we have come up with the money. If you need impact fees for schools, fine, raise the impact fees. If you... If you don't have enough transportation fees, or you need a new fee for transit, fine, we'll create a mobility fee. Water capacity issues, fine, we'll pay that fee too. But unfortunately, growth is not the problem here. It's a level of service issue. You have money, but the people that have lived in the area and bought new homes, they have not received a good level of service. So I'm simply asking you today to work on that. If you're gonna stop growth, you can stop growth in an area. It's not gonna solve any problems. The people that are upset are upset because they've paid the money. It's up to us to pay the money. It's up to you to spend the money. So please, stop telling us what you don't want. Start telling us what you do want, and give these people the level of service that they paid for. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill O'Brien, followed by Alan Deho.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Bill O'Brien. I live at 17050 Alderman Turner Road in Baum, Florida. And out of respect, I was taught to take my hat off in a building, so I'll take it off for the purse during my discussion, but I'd like your attention to discuss the RP2 I've been an advocate, I've been a public servant, I think, for most parts, in Baum for almost 50 years. I've watched the unfavorable and unplanned growth, and I've lived through the disasters that we've created. We're totally in favor of this moratorium. What I'm not in favor of is the amendment submitted by Commissioner White to remove the unincorporated or the remainder of the rural sections in Hillsborough County, because quite frankly, I'm not an advocate just for Baum. I'm an advocate for Hillsborough County, and in particular, you know, all of Hillsborough County. The unplanned growth of the past has created a lot of issues. Let's take the pause. Let's make sure we think it through. Let's create new guidelines that provide reliable and enforceable rules and regulations to allow construction and development to continue going forward. We're going to draft up what our plan, or at least what our intent, we'd like to accomplish during the course of the replanning on RP2. In particular, again, and for reemphasis, we'd like to remove, you know, or clarify and improve the intent of RP2. We'd like to maintain and establish minimum lot sizes in the RP2 designated areas. We'd like to maintain intended setbacks for development. We'd like to not include undevelopable land in the lot sizing, removing clustering. And in most important, we want a requirement that infrastructure, supporting infrastructure and support services are in place before construction can be approved. And in particular, I'd like to see a checklist, that if all the boxes aren't checked, it's not ready for development. So, with that said, we appreciate the time, appreciate your thoughts and efforts. I'd like to not consider the removal of the rest of Hillsborough County. You're gonna make Baum the new doughnut.
Thank you. Alan Deho, followed by Vivian Handy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alan Dewood, 3007 Drake Slane Court. I'm here working for, or working with, five property owners that are on Baum Boyette, outside of the Baum community plan, where most of the issue lies. I'm in full favor of Commissioner White's motion that he made at the last hearing. You know, as far as, the gentleman earlier made a comment about the 250-foot setback, developers do pay for it. It's part of the development. Those are requirements that we would have to meet in order to develop an RP2. Another requirement for RP2 is clustering. That's a given. To check something off of the box, Baum Boyette, just north of the ELAP property, utilities are there. Road improvements are happening. No one's driving south to go through Sun City Center or Waimama to come to Tampa. I too, not only do real estate, but I am a business owner. I've had a medical supply business in Sun City Center for 21 years. I watched the Walmart move out of the Benderson Plaza and go to 301. Development was sparked over there. I also seen Home Depot come in and open up its new center, and the plaza got revived. With that, I was also a student at HCC South Shore. Amazon came in. You know, development is here to happen. We have the turbine plant that's over in Apollo Beach. People are gonna move here. It's a given. We live in a wonderful state. We increased and moved to mobility fees back when I was working on a deal off of 301, which held that up at the time, because we didn't have any impact fees. We raised those. And I agree with Jennifer. Let's put our money where our mouth is. Let's start spending it on transportation. Let's stop paying for studies, only to back it up with another study to study the first study. I mean, it is what it is. Last week, over the Thanksgiving holiday, schools were not in session. I drive 99% of my time on the road, not only looking at properties, but going to see patients at the same time. Traffic was not bad, not an issue. So do we cancel all schools? I mean, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't. So, I'm in full support of Commissioner White's motion. We're outside of that doughnut hole. Stop the line at the Baum community plan will make these gentlemen very happy, and then we can continue on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Vivian Handy, Waimama, Florida. I am very much in favor of the moratorium in order for us to stop, slow the process down, and take another look. I have been accused of being anti-development. I'm not. I'm anti-poor planning. I'm anti-urban sprawl. There's been a lot of talk about how traffic congestion is bad everywhere it is. Why make things worse by creating more problems outside the urban service area and adding to what we already have? Florida is in an unprecedented situation when it comes to lack of growth management. Thanks to House Bill 7103, citizens can no longer engage in the process. This bill puts challengers on the hook to pay development attorney fees. So we cannot challenge bad decisions. We cannot challenge rezonings that we feel don't agree with our community plans or our comprehensive plans. To me, this means that we must make sure, you as a board have a duty to the citizens, to make sure that any of the rezonings that take place are done correctly, and done according to the comp plan and the community plans, and done so that all citizens benefit, not just the handful of landowners. I agree that growth is not the problem. It's poorly planned growth. It's growth that happens too fast in areas that can't support it. I find it ironic that Commissioner Merman made the earlier statement about the issues with residential next to agricultural. It's true. What happens to the people with the roosters, and then the walled subdivision comes next to the roosters? Or to my donkeys that bray every morning, and the walled subdivision folks don't like that so much? Well, there is a place for those rural residents to continue to live, and we should have a say in that matter. I fully support the moratorium on the entire RP2. I don't think that we're in a position right now to piecemeal any of this. I feel like I can speak for my neighbors. I am a resident, a property owner, a business owner, and an employer. And I'm also someone who frequently uses the services throughout South County. Our parks, our ELAP lands, our trails, and our roads. So, the connectivity is a big issue. I don't think we can afford to piecemeal and only look at portions of this when all of it is very much connected and relates to each community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak on item D1? Anyone else wishing to speak on item D1? Closes the public hearing. Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you. Well, let me just say that being an elected official is not easy. We have a representative form of government. And, you know, these folks here, in the green hats, live in my district, and, you know, they can show me the door and show me right out of office if I'm not, you know, up here representing and keeping my thumb on the pulse of the needs and the desires of people in my community. I also stress that being an elected official and promoting good public policy is not easy at times. I do continue to firmly believe that that area on the northern end of RP2 is unique. Most of it is not in a community planning area. It's a logical outgrowth of Fishhawk. There might be just a small sliver that touches the Riverview planning area, but certainly would be a small portion of it. I think that the right way to move forward, though, is to really focus on Baum and that Sun City Center piece, where we clearly have a community plan in place that sets very strong and clear aspirations for what growth should look like in the area, and that should determine it. So, you look at the carve-out that I pushed for at the last meeting. You know, the folks in my community aren't real happy about that. We have some landowners that are happy about it. I'm standing strong with the Baum community planning area and the RP2 lands within that community planning area. We have just the opposite scenario. The folks in my community, in my district, are pleased that we're marching forward with that, and we have landowners and development interests that aren't so happy. So, the point I'm making is, you know, as you're going through a process like this and trying to promote good public policy, it's very rare. It's a rare occasion that you're gonna have 100% of the people out there happy with you. And in this case, you know, maybe we have a little bit of a mixed bag, but to the folks from Baum in particular, I think I've shown a good faith effort to work with you. I've had you in my office, we've met in the conference room with staff, I've been out in the community to see you, so I hope that even if we end up focusing on RP2 within the Baum community planning area, that you will press on, continue to do this good work with staff that lies ahead. So, and to large landowners and development interests, you absolutely have an equal seat at the table. I mean, that's how this process should work. You know, everyone should come together clearly. I see issues with RP2 in Baum that I believe strongly are inconsistent with the aspirations as laid out in the community plan. I think we can make reasonable fixes, if you will, that really amount to good public policy. Frankly, I know there are some things about RP2 that even the development community doesn't like. This is a plan that was frankly imposed upon us back in the 90s. This is a great time to hit the pause button. With all the explosive growth going on around Hillsborough County, this will amount to a very small blip on the radar screen. We can do some good work. We can really demonstrate that we're serious about good planning, not stopping growth, but better planning, particularly in the South County community. So, with all that being said, I will move approval of item D1.
There's a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. And I want to thank Commissioner White for your leadership on this. It is a sticky wicket to come through the all sides of this and to work with all sides of the community. I did not support the carve-out to begin with, but the votes weren't there, and I very much appreciate your leadership to find a good position in your district. We would not be this far ahead without your leadership on this, and it's a really important path to take us down, and I appreciate all your work on that. I think this will give us a chance to do exactly what Ms. Motsinger and the builders were asking for, and that is to find not only what we don't like, but what we like. That's what we're going to be working for in this plan, is to revise the rules, find the best way forward here, and take a little break from the pitch battles that we're having here with rezoning by rezoning, and make a big plan for the right way to move forward. So I hope that we do get board approval on this.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is to Commissioner White. I do appreciate you bringing this forward. I have been spending some time researching communities that have done moratoriums, and it seems like the moratorium generally is the last resort to really dire problems that exist. So, I guess my question to you is, in your mind, I mean, I just wanna make sure, we're going into this with all of our eyes open, that there are clear outcomes and deliverables that we are looking for to get out of this moratorium, and not just slowing down growth, I mean, development. I mean, I know the planning process, I read through the purpose in the resolution, the ordinance, but it didn't, the purpose should have been more exact about the dire need or emergency of a situation to actually, because I think we could have achieved all this without using the M-word, honestly. But I think we've, we're there, so, and I'm gonna support, you know, your motion, but I just, I mean, in your mind, do you have clear outcomes and deliverables that you're trying to get out of this?
Yes, sir.
You recognize.
I absolutely do. You know, they relate to transportation needs in the area for better transportation, and I'm not talking about concurrency, but we have a lot of work to do with respect to transportation in the area. We have a lot of work to do with respect to inconsistencies between the RP2 category and the Baum community plan. There's the commercial piece, which frankly, I don't think the development community likes all that much, so that clearly needs to be tweaked. But although I very much am willing and able to help guide and steer this process, I've already spoken with some of the citizens and connected them with staff, I very, very purposefully, though, wanna stay at arm's length, though, and let this be driven by the community and the stakeholders with, of course, the expertise of staff. But yes, I would envision, in my mind, some clear deliverables in the end.
Okay. I guess, I think at the end of the day, what we're doing is updating the community plan, in my opinion. It's something that needs to happen, not just in these areas, but over in some areas in my district too, Gibsonton, Riverview, all those areas need to, the whole community plan process, if we're gonna use moratoriums to update community plans, then that's what we need to say.
I'll meet you halfway, though, and say that it's sort of the opposite, though. We're making sure that development that happens in Baum is consistent with the community plan. Not so much changing the community plan, but making sure that if we can, if staff and the community stakeholders and the development interests, landowner interests, if they can come together and create, let's call it an RP2 Baum, such that the land development code regulations are consistent with that Baum community plan, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your thoughts, because it does, there is some clarification there. And I think as we move forward, we have to put pressure on the plan commission and our development services staff to get these community plans updated throughout Hillsborough County. They're sitting on the shelf, most of it's not being implemented because of the costs, and... Most of it's not being implemented because of the costs, and we need to just do a thorough review and get it done. Rip that Band-Aid off that you say all the time, Commissioner Overman, and just face the facts of what we're looking at, and not just doing... I feel like the moratorium is more or less an exercise for our community plans to get where we want to go. I understand, I get it, and we'll... I think this is kind of a test case to see how we can move forward with everything else. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I guess I would never call it the M-word, because I look at it as a positive pause to really as... And thank you, Commissioner White, for bringing this forward. Commissioner Smith, I think it is a really important time for us to join with our community and really look at the future of Hillsborough County and what we're doing in these new areas, which I think are the development that has been put forth in the few years that I've been here outside of the urban service area has not been, for the most part, the kind of development that will serve us well in the future. I also have great concerns, and in terms of a deliverable and in terms of pulling off the Band-Aid, I think we very much have to do that, and we need to start recognizing. And there's... I have at least one item on here today, F2, in terms of mobility fees and the special treatment that is given to the RP2 in that way of low mobility fees. And also actually of D6 in our water and wastewater, and how we are really not in any way, we are unique in the entire state of Florida in our lack of impact fees that we're charging in water and wastewater to developers. And it's mythology that outside the urban service area that there are... That wastewater and wastewater is being paid for in these areas. And I intend to bring that forward, not today, but in the future, in terms of looking at that. I think we really do have to look at how growth can pay for itself, and because we haven't been doing our due diligence in terms of collecting the impact fees that we need to build the community and future that we need, I think that is something that we can really look at coming forward. So I very much appreciate this pause, and I like to say, I don't think it is an emergency action. I had read about Osceola County, a county that is about the size of ours, and they did an eight or nine month... And many, many communities across the country have done this, to really look at the way that they move forward to development. And I've been looking at Osceola County and the kinds of things that they put forward, and I think we might have a lot to learn from what they have been doing as well as our surrounding counties that are charging far more impact fees to pay for impacts. And I'm talking about Manatee and Pasco and Polk that are really getting investment in their communities and preparing for the future in a way that I don't think that we have been in Hillsborough County. So I don't want to just take the Band-Aid off on people living here and having them have to pay enormous increases in water and wastewater and stormwater and those kinds of fees on residents already here. I think that there has to be some investment at the start to really start us on the right foot, so that we don't constantly fall behind, incredibly fall behind on infrastructure needs.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, and I'll keep this brief. You know, since I showed up here last November, every one of our land use meetings has given me heartburn, because we have, with a few exceptions, we have some serious problems in our comprehensive planning in general. We've not addressed some of our land use that makes affordable housing even possible in some respects. We have infrastructure problems that we haven't planned for, and we have growth that isn't going to stop just because we, you know, raised prices to a level that people can't afford to move here or live here. So while I love this moratorium concept for this specific community, to Commissioner Murman's point about deliverables, I am urging all of us and the staff to be prepared for a robust discussion in the next year during this moratorium to run concurrently with a moratorium that addresses the community plan for RP2, but also to address our overall comprehensive goals. Because as a county and within the state of Florida, we can't build a wall to keep people from coming here that are going to address the 1,800 people a month that are moving to Hillsborough County and be able to address the fact that we need housing units for people to live in, and they want to have a way to get around and support their families. So as this moratorium moves forward to take care of the communities within the Balm area, I just want to emphasize that concurrently, we need to have the conversations about what we do as a county as a whole in addressing not only our impact fees, mobility fees, community design in a way that we create mobility, connectivity, and equity in our overall planning, so that we make sense in the decisions that we make. If it means streamlining land codes in such a way that can create opportunity without harming other communities, we need to include that in the conversation. So I look forward to this time period, but it can't stand alone. We have work to do, and I'm looking forward to those conversations, and I'm looking forward to working with our development staff, the Plan and Commission, the MPO, our transit agencies, as we look for ways to address not only the affordability factor in Hillsborough County, but also to build the economy as we do as it grows here. Thank you.
Okay. You know, I've wrestled with this moratorium, this one and the next one coming up, because the mere fact is that the issues that everyone is addressing is not issues that this board particularly put in place. It's issues that boards put in place way before the time that we got here, before we got here. And we're the ones that's having to feel the butt of what other commissions before us have done in planning in this county. As I've said before, we can't build a wall around this county, but we as a board, this board and future boards to come, because some of us will be leaving here in 349 days. We need to be well aware of the planning that we're able to put in place within that period of time. I don't know if the moratorium is the way to do this. I really don't know. I don't think this is the right way to do it. I think we need to be serious about... The mere fact is that we have to do well, smart planning of growth in Hillsborough County. We can't stop people from coming here, and we cannot stop the opportunity for employment and jobs to come here. We can't stop growth. We just can't do it. And I think that this board and future boards to come, and some of you will be here hopefully, maybe, need to put our heads together and decide, how do we have well-planned growth without basically shutting it down? You can't shut it down. You just can't do that. You can't. So I'm going to ask Commissioner White. Commissioner White, nine months is a long time. And I'm talking to staff, and they're telling me that anything shorter than... I was thinking about three months might not work. What about 180 days? Six months?
I'd have to ask staff if they can get the work done in that time period. I've been told that that's next to impossible, but...
Commissioners Lucia Garces, Chief Deputy County Administrator for Infrastructure and Development. We have been wrestling with this question. It clearly is a challenging piece of work to be done. The challenge, I think, the timeframe was out to nine months because of some of the community interactions. We think also if it starts now, we lose a month of December. That's pretty much a dead month for us, so that's difficult. If we could start it in January and go January to June, it will be a very tight timeframe for us, but we believe that the bulk of the work can be done during that time period. Whether that actually gives you regulations that are ready to go, that's going to be... I mean, some of this is, once we get into it, we'll have a better feel for it, but we believe that a lot of the policy discussion and the policy framework can be set in that time period. It will be tight, and we would need to at least start in January so that we could do the work in December and gear up for it when it starts up in January.
Mr. Chair, so we haven't had a chance to communicate, but... So, I mean, Lucia's right, the detail work is going to take a long time, but we can't really start the detail work until we know from a policy point of view what the board wants to do. That can be done, that needs to be done in two to three months. I mean, we've got, you know, impact... We've got the big three impact fees that need to be addressed from a pure budgetary point of view. We're going to be into the next budget in January. Even though it's a two-year budget, and normally in the second year of the two-year budget, we don't dig into things. I mean, I told you all when I delivered my budget message last year or this year, the situation we're in, and I've been saying that now for two or three years. And so, you know, put aside all of the detailed discussions about RP2, WVR, all that kind of stuff. None of that matters because we're, in the sense that, you know, we're facing an issue of budgetary insustainability, unsustainability here. And so, you know, the decisions that have to be made need to be made first at a policy level. That then drives the detail work. The detail work could take nine months, but as long as we know, and as long as the business community and developers know what the ground rules are, then people can start making intelligent decisions about risk and investment and about services. And so I think, I'm just saying, in the next two to three months, we need to know, we, from staff's point of view, need to know what the board wants to do as a policy, not just on RP2, but on land use in general, and then we can start driving through the details.
So let me get a clear understanding of what you're saying, Mr. Merrill. If we put these... What you need to know from us within the next month, being December, if we're going to do a moratorium, if we do this, put this... 30 days work for you to put those things in place. If this board buckles down and decides what we're going to do as a collegial body and get that to you within 30 days, by December 31st, if we do a moratorium effective January 1st through the end of June, will that work? Or no?
I guess what I'm saying is, it's really, at this point, whether it's six or nine months isn't really the issue. The issue is, I mean, we can leave it at nine months. The issue is, I think, by the end of January is when we need to understand, and I think the board needs to come to some agreement about these big issues of land use, affordable housing, transportation, mobility, that are going to drive difficult decisions in the 2021 budget. And then I think at that point, once the board gets to that level of decision-making, then we'll know whether it's going to be another six months or nine months. I don't think we can tell you today how long the detail work is going to take, because we don't know, and we don't know as a... You don't know as a body yet what's going to... What's this thing going to look like? And so I would say by the end of January is when we would like for the board to be able to at least wrestle at that or decide at that policy level the critical issues, and then we can do the work.
You're going to be leaving here in June?
Yeah.
So this question might not get you... Will get you into trouble.
I doubt it.
Do we need a moratorium?
I think right now it would be good to have a pause, because I think the energy and the focus, the board... I'm just going to suggest that the energy and focus of the board needs to be on solving the big issues, not on wrestling at the detail level, zoning by zoning, application by application. It just muddies the water. So the benefit of this is it allows the board to focus initially where you need to focus, which is at that policy level, that then drives decisions that affect, cascade through a whole series of things. So I would say, but I think there's... But to your point, there's a real need to not let a moratorium continue on forever. I mean, so there has to be... So the reality, you know, that I've shared with everyone, I think, in briefings, is that, you know, I asked Bonnie and Tom Fessler, budget folks, to go back over the last 15 years and look at where our new revenue has come from to pay for all of the services that people enjoy in this community. We haven't raised taxes. We haven't raised taxes in 10 years as county administrator. We've reduced taxes. We haven't reduced service. We've reduced the cost of service, but guess what pays... So if we're not raising taxes, we're not generating new revenue, guess how those services are paid for?
New growth.
95% of the last 15 years, 95% of the revenue that has paid for all the services that people enjoy have come from new growth. Now, like it or not, whether you like growth or don't like growth, that's a fact of life. And so you turn the spigot off, like, immediately, that cascades through the budget and starts to affect not new growth, it affects people who live here today and the growth that they get. There has to be a process here that allows for our local economy to adjust, for business to understand what the rules are, for everyone to understand the tax implications of this thing, and allow for this to have a smooth landing. To your point, so building houses doesn't attract people to live, to move here. That's not how it happens. People move here because of our weather, because of our business environment, because of a lot of reasons. So you stop building houses, that doesn't change people's decisions about moving here. And so, and we can't turn the spigot off. We just can't. We need to manage better. We need to look at our revenue and our tax structure, and that's a five, 10-year landing glide path that we need to enter into here. It starts with, though, these hard decisions that you're talking about today. And so...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Look, I got three people in the queue. We're not going to go any further on this. I think we all know how we're going to vote. We've got a long agenda today. I'm just saying, if this passes, that this board comes together and work on this as a collegial body, and let's not be killing each other off about what we want. You're not voting my way, I'm not voting your way. If we're going to have a well-planned growth, a well-planned growth plan within Hillsborough County, we need to do this as a collegial body. So we have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. It's in the further discussion, and you changed my mind on my vote, Mr. Merrill. Please, Quagmire.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Next item, D2.
Good morning again, Commissioners.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Okay. So going back to your... I do think we've got to buckle down and get this policy side of our outcomes, our deliverables. And I think we need to do it sooner, not later, and not let this drag out. And I am in full agreement that we do this soon. I don't know what our calendar is, but we need to get this done. I know everybody has got a holiday schedule. I understand that, but this is a priority, top priority. And so I don't know what you have in mind, but we have... We need to get this scheduled soon, and I don't know if we can do it before the end of the year. It's probably going to take more than one, probably two, but I don't think we should wait. And I know we have the workshop on the fees and the impact fees and all that on the 19th. Maybe we should just make this an all-afternoon, spend half, two hours on policy, two hours on impact fees, and then go from there. But I just, I don't want us to wait. I think it's too important. We've been screaming from this dais about community plans and planning. I can't tell you for how long. You know... You know we have, and we've got to get...
Let me ask this question. On the 19th, is EPC meeting, is it going to meet on the 19th?
Cancelled.
EPC is cancelled?
Uh-huh.
So why don't we just have an all-day workshop? We're going to be anyway. Okay, we work that out, Ms. Merrill? You come see me?
Sure, yeah.
All right, we'll do that. Okay. I'm sorry, uh, D...
Uh, D2.
Two.
Yeah.
Commissioners, this item is the final public hearing and consideration of adoption of an ordinance providing for a 270-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications for rezonings and plan development, zoning modifications within the Wyomama Village Residential 2, WVR2, future land use category, that would increase the number of allowable residential units or non-residential square footage and/or reduce required buffers unless the reduction is to provide for connectivity to adjacent property or rights of way. This is the final public hearing for consideration of adoption of the ordinance, so vote is required.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hearing. I have six speakers lined up, Mr. Buddy Harwell, followed by Jennifer Motsinger.
Buddy Harwell, just want to echo my previous statements, my pictures, stuff I've entered, previous meetings we've had here. I'd like to remind you, Melissa Zornita, in the 2045 Outlook Plan states, there's over 50,000 acres inside the urban service area right now for development and redevelopment. Build more businesses, let's get more tax. We get property tax that's not homesteaded. We get tangible tax, employment tax, sales tax, and if you keep the people in the county, we can collect this gas tax you just raised. We still have empty houses from the recession also. So I urge you to approve this one, let us work it out. I think we got a good chance of at least making a 50-50 chance everyone happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Motsinger, followed by Bill O'Brien.
Good morning again. I won't take too much of your time. I just wanted to reiterate that this area does provide a lot of affordable housing product to members of the community. It's market rate, but it is, but it's important for people to have, have homes to live in. And you're right, the, the growth is not going to stop, it's just going to go to other areas, because I work in Pasco County a lot more than I work in Hillsborough these days. So I'm very encouraged by a lot of what I hear. I always make myself available to participate in any conversation and represent the, the perspective of the industry. And yes, I'm glad that it's finally been said and acknowledged that we are the ones paying the bill. Happy to do so, but we do want that level of service. I think it's fair. And, and again, with the moratorium, I've gotten more phone calls from people across the country in the last few weeks responding to the word "moratorium." So yes, there is a very negative connotation to a moratorium. So as expeditiously as we can move forward, that is just going to, that's just going to reverberate throughout the community and the nation, which is all looking at us for opportunities to grow as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Bill O'Brien, followed by Vivian Handy.
Good morning again. I won't reiterate what I said earlier, I just want to be a matter of record or be a, a point of record. Again, we must take the pause, and I respectfully respond to a lot of the comments in regard to concerns for growth of Hillsborough County and people moving into Hillsborough County. I just urge you to think through, you know, from a real business perspective, what it is we're trying to do. We're not trying to stop development. We're not trying to say we're not in favor of new people coming in. That's not what we're, what we're saying. What we're saying is, we have done what we're doing for the last 50 years. It's not right. It's wrong. What we have developed has been a disaster. I'm a native, I've lived here all my life. Those of you who haven't lived here all of that time, I'm 65 years old. If you could imagine the changes that have occurred in Hillsborough County in that period of time, it's overwhelming. So all I'm saying is, take the time, do what's right. If you continue doing the same thing, then you're setting a, you're setting a target down the road that is going to be another failure, continued failure. And as you do nothing, it exacerbates what's happening, because it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. Two years ago, we asked, we begged and pleaded for a red light, a red light, at US 301 and County Road 672. Today, when I come to this meeting, the line to get through that red light was a half a mile long. Stop doing what you're doing. Take the time to think it through, we'll work with you. I agree, we have to have goals and objectives. Anything you do must have worthy goals and objectives. Let's set those goals and objectives immediately. Let's set target agendas and timeframes to get things done, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Vivian Handy, followed by John Grandoff.
Hi, Vivian Handy, Wyomama, Florida. I would like to reiterate that I am a resident, a property owner, a small, local specialty business owner in Wyomama. This is of enormous importance to me, my coworkers, my neighbors, and the entire Wyomama community. Why is that? That's because we need to slow down and stop willy-nilly development that will have negative effects. We hear lots of talk about we can't shut it down. Well, what about shutting down our rural lifestyles, our agricultural uses, the effect on our recreation and open spaces? I appreciate Commissioner White's recognition of the need to involve citizens. However, I don't think we do have an equal seat at the table. My neighbors can't afford attorneys to represent them. They can't afford to drive downtown and take time off work. I can, I'm confident in saying that I represent a large number of neighbors and my coworkers in Wyomama. We need local boutique specialty employers such as mine. I keep hearing about rooftops and the need for rooftops to attract employers. We don't want Burger King, we don't want Chick-fil-A, we don't want another Dollar General. We want employers that will draw and keep the residents and actually create the village feel that our plan initially intended. The recent rezonings that have happened very much point to the need for this moratorium so we can revisit these things. We need connectivity, we need protection of natural resources, we need jobs and services. Our village plan states that 55% of jobs will be provided for within the village and 75% of services. This means that on the last two rezonings, we would have to have 1,600 jobs in Wyomama. I don't see that happening anytime soon. And 75, the need of 75% of services means 54,000 square feet of commercial space. We don't have that now. Let's hold off, let's not rush into this. And let's not rush into it to the point that citizen participation is challenged. I also would urge you to look at the entire area. Let's not exclude the light industrial zone that has been proposed. We don't need that to be, to turn into more residential. We need to ensure that that will stay the commercial area that we need to comply with the village plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Grandoff, followed by Jacob Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the County Commission, Ms. Beck and Mr. Merrill. My name is John Grandoff, my address is Suite 3700 Bank of America Plaza. I have some comments I'd like you to consider on the adoption of this ordinance. And I'd first like to start by, our First Amendment, which has what's called the Petition Clause, which is rarely read about. You hear about the Religion Clause and the Free Press Clause. The Petition Clause gives us a right to petition our government, and that is found in an application for a building permit or a petition to rezone your property. You're exercising a First Amendment right. A moratorium constricts that right, it has to be finely drafted, precisely drafted, it cannot be overbroad, it cannot be confusing, or you run afoul of that fundamental right. The right to use property is a fundamental civil right that we're all embodied with by our Constitution. Your cover sheet on this morning's item says, in the bottom page, "On November 6, the board modified its proposed moratorium to reduce its application to only new applications for rezonings and plan development zoning modifications." In the draft ordinance which you have crafted, and I asked you to read along with me because it is confusing and we're creating a problem, and I think we need to remedy it this morning. I'm not speaking against the moratorium per se, I just think there are some flaws in this document that are going to create problems. Please read along with me. First, on page four, section four, imposition of moratorium. Hillsborough County hereby, hereby imposes a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications for rezonings and plan development zoning modifications, and then skip down, following the effective date of this ordinance. Okay? So we're going to agree when this is going to become effective. The second item you need to read, you need to skip down to section seven, penalties. The moratorium may be enforced by the following method of enforcement. A, revocation of development permits, development orders. Those have been granted after exercising your First Amendment right to petition your government. So you're at risk of having those permits revoked by the county. So that's number two. Now, now you have to skip back to page three, at the bottom, just the last two words, all zoning, and now go to the next page, all zoning applications that were pending or approved prior to October 16th. Prior to October 16th, not the effective date of the ordinance, prior to October 16th, shall be entitled to have all associated permits and approvals reviewed and processed in accordance with those approvals and the future land use plan policies and Land Development Code in effect as of October 16th.
Thank you, sir.
You have a problem in the ordinance. May I have one minute, Mr. Chairman?
No, sir. No, sir. Three minutes. You know the rules better than anyone else. Thank you very much.
I asked that you ask for clarification from the county attorney on this conflict.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Mr. Grandoff, that's the second time you've done that to me since I've been in this chair running over your time. Just let that happen again, okay, sir? That's it. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, good morning. Jake Kramer with Stearns Weaver. I'm going to place a graphic on the overhead. Commissioners, I'm here again to advocate on behalf of the economic prosperity of downtown Wyomama. Not sure if you've been down there recently, but economically, it's doing better than it has in a long time. We, the development community, have been working with several community organizations in that area. We've been making a lot of progress, they have been making a lot of progress and doing a great job bolstering the economic prosperity of Wyomama. They've made a lot of progress through very hard work. My, my concern is the way that the ordinance, the moratorium ordinance is currently drafted, I think would, would, would be a detriment to that economic progress that they've made so far. So our request, again, is, is pretty simple. It's that you allow rezonings within the light industrial and office district, and only for light industrial and office uses as described and laid out in the comprehensive plan. We're not asking for any residential in that area, we're only asking to allow that district to grow, to allow Wyomama's downtown to grow as the framers of the Wyomama Village Plan. That, that was a pro, community process. Those collaborators came up with this idea of expanding Wyomama downtown, and I'm just asking you not to stop the progress they're making in Wyomama. So that's the green area on your graphic. And, and I've confirmed with Planning Commission staff that this is the area. There was some confusion in the last hearing about what exactly that area was. We traced it back, and this green area is, is that area. As I suggested in, in the first hearing, not doing this, in my opinion, would render the moratorium inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and the Wyomama Village Plan. Those documents require the commission to provide for opportunities for job growth in Wyomama, and one of the key pieces of that was this light industrial area. So if we don't do this, I think we're putting an artificial and arbitrary cap on the economic growth of an area that sorely needs it and is just now starting to make some progress. So I'd ask for your support to continue the job growth in, in downtown Wyomama. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on item D2? Anyone else wishing to speak on item D2? Close the public hearing. Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. And thanks to all the citizens and, and stakeholders for their position. I know that we've all been hearing from citizens on this issue for months in lots of email, and I've been working closely with the citizens of Wyomama and some of their community groups, as well as Homeowners Association. And, you know, I'm feeling very optimistic that, that we are in a really good place here. We have, as a board, already set the wheels in motion to begin working. So it's not, it's not like we are, like, going to start. We've already started. We've hired a firm that is going to analyze the real estate and the economy and the economic impacts of development in these areas, both RP2 and WVR2, and looking at the growth projections in a, in a new way than they were done when those community plans were done. So, so that's already going, we've brought in Taryn Sabia's group from USF to work with the Wyomama community, to work on their Wyomama Community Plan and their town center. And specifically, we've directed the Planning Commission staff and, and Taryn's group to work on the issue that Mr. Kramer is concerned about and, and others are concerned about how, and Ms. Handy mentioned, how jobs work concurrently with development, so that we are not creating separate, isolated bedroom communities full of commuters, but actually connecting these residential to the commercial. So I think it's critical that we look at the commercial area, the light industrial area at the same time as, as residential uses and what all those impacts are on the infrastructure, because commercial has impacts on roads and water and sewer and fire as well as residential. So it's not a matter of just being concerned with residential here, it's being concerned with all of this in the, in the Wyomama Community Plan and having a chance to work with the Planning Commission staff and these consultants that are brought in and the communities. So I'm, I'm feeling optimistic as I sit here that we are going to be able to work with all those processes and come back with the deliverables that you all are looking for and that the Builders Association is looking for, and, and come back with plans that the community is, is more confident will guide growth in ways that connect to their community and be a part of their community. But we really need, this last piece of the moratorium is, is an integral piece of this process, so that we have time to put these plans in place. Otherwise, without this moratorium, what will happen is what happened in Ruskin, when we were working for two years on the Ruskin Community Plan, and developers came in and land use attorneys came in and nailed down the zonings with the, under the current rules so that they would be grandfathered in with the entitlements they have now. And then all the work that we did for the community plans came in later. And that will happen here. If you carve out a piece of it or don't allow this whole thing to move forward, wherever you carve out a piece, I can guarantee you, we'll be sitting here with the pitch battles, with the developers trying to nail down their zonings under the current rules before all these planners and consultants and community and us have a chance to put revised rules and really look at it in terms of today's data. So while everybody is working on their plans, I just ask you to give us all this breathing room for the entire thing so we can work on it all together. Thank you. And so I'll make a motion to move this forward as it's written here, to create that moratorium.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp, and Commissioner Oberman. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize.
Thank you. I agree that there's an opportunity to, by carving pieces out of this equation, that we open that door for a preemption and limit the opportunities for a smart village development. There is plenty of zoning already inside the village to accommodate any kind of opportunity for economic development and infill in order to make the village community plan act in the way it needs to. What we don't have is the connectivity that I've been asking for in the residential and business plans that, in a community that needs to have that connectivity to its business resources. So having an opportunity to explore that over the next 270 days is a great way of solving the problem that we have not addressed since, at least you and I got here. So, and I know much of our current board has wrestled with over the years. So I hardly support this. I don't like moratoriums any more than anybody else. But the realities of the fact that we need to give our community builders, our economic builders, and our home builders guidance on what is the best way to grow, I think this is one way we can get that done in an effective way without having to change the rules and get exceptions and delay the growth process that we already have that's long, anyway. This might actually allow us to develop in a much quicker, more efficient way, which is what costs in the development process, as much as materials and other things. So, thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Merrill, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to ask our county attorney, so, because we did have a discussion when we had this, our last meeting, on the first hearing of this ordinance, about the conflict between the moratorium and the Wyoma Village Plan. And have you guys given an opinion on that? Or has...
I'm not sure I understand the conflict that you're describing.
Well, because it clearly says that the Wyoma Village Plan is adopted into the livable communities element of the comp plan, which serves, we know, as our land use constitution for this county. State law makes very clear, local governments' land use decisions must be in strict compliance with the comprehensive plan. The WVR was created as a direct result of the community coming together to draft the Wyoma Village Plan. And so I think, I think the ordinance conflicts and it disregards the, what the intent for the Wyoma Village Plan. And I think what, you know, and I have talked with many residents out there. They are concerned that if we don't exclude, as you all know, I made a motion, it was not accepted, to exclude the Wyoma Village Light Industrial and Office District of the Wyoma Village Residential 2 Future Land Use category from the moratorium. And I did it, to be clear, because, you know, that's a job center for Wyoma. And I think if we're examining this as, and there can be potential residential move into that green area that we all saw, then I think we have some real issues. Where are the jobs going to be? Are you just going to, are we going to have another community of just a lot of people living there? So, I mean, did you all look at that? I mean, it was brought up at our last meeting.
Yes, Commissioner. We're confident that the ordinance as drafted is legally sufficient. We did advise last time that if you, if the Board chooses to extract the industrial center, that's doable, if you want to do that. But we're confident that as drafted, it's legally sufficient.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make another run excluding that. I'm very concerned about the jobs in Wyoma. And I think the purpose, I, the purpose of moratorium is to look at the planning, the residential component, all that. But really, y'all, they need jobs in Wyoma. And I don't know how else to say it. Unless we exclude this district from the moratorium, I think that we're going to get stuck with this big residential, you know, conglomerate, again, coming into Wyoma that, and there's not going to be any space for jobs. So I'll, I don't know if I have support, but I'll move to amend the ordinance to exclude the Wyoma Village Light Industrial Office District, the Wyoma Village Residential 2 Future Land Use category from the moratorium.
Second, most, an amendment by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Hagan. You have to speak now to the amendment. Commissioner White?
Yes, to the amendment. You know, I've spoken with some stakeholders, most recently Mr. Kramer, yesterday, which is not a problem, by the way. This is a legislative process, not a quasi judicial process. And I had said that I can understand the rationale behind a carve-out of that area and could support it. But I just want to say that, Commissioner Smith, I want to compliment you because in your comments here, you've changed my mind. You've clearly articulated why this should be looked at holistically, the proposed commercial area along with the proposed residential areas within the Wyoma Village. So I can understand where you're coming from. I can certainly understand that we have a responsibility to provide the right kinds of jobs and the right kinds of commercial centers, particularly when we're looking to honor the concept of a village concept, where we don't just create another bedroom community full of commuters that are heading to Tampa and wherever else, whatever other stretches of the county they may be heading to. To really make a village work, you have to have real job centers, you know, for the citizens within the village. So I can understand the holistic approach. And, you know, literally in the past, you know, five, 10 minutes, you've changed my mind. So I will not be able to support a carve-out.
Commissioner Smith, to the amendment.
Yes, sir. And thank you, Commissioner White. I just want to highlight that if we were to carve out a piece here, we would be seeing land use attorneys coming in to nail down zonings here before we give the community a chance to look at and possibly revise exactly what kinds of businesses that they're looking for there, you know, get a little bit more specific about what fits in and how those jobs will serve the residents. So it's not going to stop jobs. Hopefully, it'll be a better, we'll move forward with a better plan than if we start grandfathering people out.
Commissioner Merman withdraws her amendment. Now back on the main motion. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Well, I was just going to jump in on that discussion. I thought, again, I will thank you for your incredible analysis, insight, and experience in all of this, because I think it is such a guiding force for us to be able to make good decisions moving forward about how we do that. But I just wanted to say, in terms of, what I understood in terms of light industrial, also, this is not relevant at this point, but as so many things that I find disturbing about our code as we have it now, or everything, what we do, is I understand light industrial can include housing. So homes, so residential. And that was a concern to me because it could, we wouldn't naturally think that. You wouldn't think light industrial would include being able to have residential development. But apparently, it does. I won't bother to confirm that now. Onto the main motion. I just wanted to thank so many of the people from South County for their eloquence and determination and for educating us about exactly what they see for their communities and what is going on down there. I think it's an important, it's important for us to hear that. I appreciate the comment that what we have developed, as Mr. Harwell said, has been a disaster. I think we're not talking about stopping growth. We're talking about trying to make good growth, smart growth. We're trying to develop in a way that sustains us for the future. You know, and I'll just, I don't want to get into a back and forth so much, but I just would like to say that I don't think it's true that, I mean, I'll say this. It's not true that we haven't raised taxes. We haven't raised millage. We have raised taxes because the value of every person's house in Hillsborough County practically, or residence, has gone up or their businesses. So they're paying increased taxes. And I think that is, for a great part, what is sustaining us. Because we are not, I think it's important to make the point, we are not doing what we need to do in our impact fees to pay for growth, as every other county in the state of Florida has been doing. And so it is our increased value on our assessments that has been just keeping us above water by a thread, by that increased value. It's not, I think, my belief is that whenever we do the kind of growth that we've been doing, we are losing not only economic development resources, but we're losing quality of life because we haven't been doing it well. So I really want to have this opportunity to move forward. I thank you both for these moratoriums. I think it's really important for us to have this discussion and do a future that we can be proud of, a legacy that we can do to change the future of the county.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp, and Commissioner Oberman to approve Item D2. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
D3.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D3 is a public hearing, second public hearing to consider adoption of a proportionate share agreement amongst Hillsborough County, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Starlight Homes Florida LLC. The purpose of this agreement would be to provide for school concurrency for proposed 132-unit, single-family attached development, known as the Arbor's Townhomes. The development would have a deficiency of 18 elementary and eight middle school seats. The agreement would call for a payment of $677,893 to provide capacity for those student stations. The elementary school seats would be provided in Elementary E. As of this date, would be in Elementary E, proposed for the water set development. And the middle school seats would be proposed for the middle school at Triple T High School. I'm available for any questions. This is a public hearing.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address Item D3? Anyone wishing to address Item D3? To close the public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White to approve Item D3. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
D4. And B3, both are related, D4 and B3.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yaxton Petrovich Economic Development Department. Commissioners, if you have no objections, I would like to address B3 ahead of D4 to provide a better flow of information or any discussion topics because they're related items.
You want to address Item B3 first?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
On October 13, 2019, SM Ruskin Development LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel, which is located at southwest intersection of 16th Avenue Southeast and 12th Street Southeast. Ruskin is a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 19.46 acres and is shown on a projected map. Florida statutes require that one public hearing, a community meeting, be held in the community near the area to be designated and that the community meeting be advertised and notice posted in the affected area. On November 6th, you authorized the community meeting for November 16th, but notice was inadvertently not posted. Therefore, we are requesting authorization to reschedule the proposed community meeting to December 11th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at Ruskin Park and Recreation Center at 901 Sixth Street, Southeast Ruskin, Florida, 33570. The advertised community meeting will be held at 6:00 PM at the BOCC. And the BOCC will be provided with full transcript of the public comment at the community meeting. The two proposed public hearings are already set for December 4, 2019, and December 18, 2019, at 10:00 AM during the Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting in the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Boardroom on the second floor of the Frederick B. Carl County Center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. Staff recommendation is to authorize a rescheduling community meeting as proposed. At this time, I do have questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions? We're doing B3 now, so. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by, who's second? Commissioner Oberman to approve Item B3.
You might want to take the public hearing first.
B3 is not a public hearing, is it?
No, but I think...
On B3.
D4 is.
So you're going to take a B4 also at the same time?
I think you take public comment before you approve the item.
All right. This is a public hearing on Item D...
D4.
...D4, which can conject with item, come together with B3.
Yes, right.
Anyone wishing to address Item D4? Anyone wishing to address Item D4?
We do have a representative from the applicant that has a short presentation to provide an overview of the project.
I don't think, you got your votes? I think. You come up here and talk, you might lose your votes. Okay. Close the public hearing. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Oberman to approve Item D4 and B3. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
All right. That takes us to D5. D, D as in dog, D5.
Commissioners, this is the second public hearing for designation of a brownfield area, which is located at 5321 Hartford Street, Tampa. On August 22nd, 2019, Hartford Street Properties LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel as a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 67 acres and is shown on a projected map. Brownfield area is a real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual perceived environmental contamination. The applicant plans to develop the property as an industrial manufacturing facility and office headquarters for Hartford Street Properties LLC. The designation provides certain potential benefits to the applicant associated with cleanup of the site. There is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. At the second public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners, the Board must consider the following in determining the area to be designated. Whether the brownfield area warrants economic development and has a reasonable potential for such activities, whether the proposed area to be designated represents a reasonably focused approach as in not overly large in geographic coverage, whether the area has potential to interest the private sector in participating in rehabilitation, and whether the area contains sites or parts of sites suitable for limited recreational open space, cultural, or historical preservation purposes. An advertised community meeting on this designation was held at Badger Daylighting Hydrovac Truck Excavating Services on October 10th, 2019. No public comment was received. The first public hearing was held on November 6th, 2019, and no public comment was received. Staff has reviewed the application and the applicable criteria, and staff recommendation is for approval of the resolution designating the brownfield area. Commissioner Oberman, at one of the previous meetings, you had asked a question regarding the vegetation on this site. My understanding from talking to the applicant is that some of the native species would be retained of the trees. However, a number of the trees on that site are actually invasive species, specifically Brazilian peppers, and they would be dealt with in accordance with PBC rules and regulations. And also, I'm here to answer any questions, along with applicants, representatives.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address Item D5? Anyone wishing to address Item D5? Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White to approve Item D5. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. Final public hearing, D6.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bath Channella Water Resources Department. Item D6 is a public hearing to approve a resolution establishing the board's intent to use a uniform method of collecting and assessment for impact fee assessment units 19-101, 19-201, and 19-301. As you know, the assessment process allows property owners to pay the remaining water and wastewater impact fees over a 20-year period of time and reduces the burden of a one-time payment. We estimate that the county will collect $56,768,000 through the life of these assessment units. The money is to be collected and is included in the Water Resources Department Fiscal Year 20 approved budget. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D6? Anyone wishing to address item D6? Close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Murman. Second by Commissioner Smith to approve item D6. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to talk about this item and draw everyone's attention to it because I think it's really important. And once again, in case you didn't catch that, it's $57 million, this item. So I will tell you that I wanted to vote no on this item today and did a lot of research. These impact fee assessment units do one major thing. They allow developers to avoid ever having to pay impact fees for water and wastewater. In case you haven't looked at this closely, this item carries with it a massive amount of money, as I said, nearly $57 million. It makes the county a bank to loan this $57 million for 20 years at 5% interest instead of collecting impact fees upfront from developers. It forces the clerk and tax collector to record and track these liens on property for 20 years to collect hundreds of thousands of dollars of payments. I even went through the policy. There's a whole act about, you know, what we do in terms of foreclosure in our lien. And as a result of this policy, the county denies itself hundreds of millions of dollars that would otherwise be available now for our wastewater and water infrastructure. Mr. Cassidy, when I talked to him about this, told me that he knew of not a single other county or municipality anywhere in the state of Florida that does this. The city of Tampa doesn't do this. I asked Steve Tindell of Tindell Oliver about this, and he told me that he was unaware of any other county that does this and was rather taken aback that we do so. But I'm told my hands are tied as to this particular item here now because we've already approved over this year three impact fee assessment units for $57 million. So this is just about getting that money by putting our prior approval on the tax rolls so that Hillsborough County residents can get their money back over the next 20 years. Understand, this is money we would have now sitting to invest in our water and wastewater. There's also this. These three impact fee assessment units, as I said, we voted three times during this year, are being used outside the urban service boundary. And two reasons I looked into this, and one is that I kept hearing that outside the urban service boundary, they're paying all for their own water and wastewater, which is not at all true. And second, we've been asked to put a huge increase for our citizens on their water and wastewater bills. That would increase it by 300, over the six years would have been $360 a year. So I was very motivated to find out, you know, how this whole financing worked. And I will just say this, too. We have, is there, I thought we have a graphic there. I just wanted to point out, so this is just the third time, I think this is, these are the places where the, it's not quite there, huh? We can make it. These are the places, there we go. All the places where you see the numbers are where, those are the lots that we are doing, that we're doing this financing for, where we're acting like a bank, like no other county does. The ones in green are outside the urban service area and account for millions and millions of dollars. One developer in particular, Eisenhower Group, has $2 million just on this set alone, that they have, where the county is taking their bill. And instead of them paying the impact fee upfront and then the person wrapping it into the mortgage of their home, as they do everywhere else, and in the city of Tampa, we're instead acting as a bank. The whole point of this complicated scheme is to make it so developers don't have to pay impact fees for water and wastewater, as they do in every other county in the state. This has no benefit to a homeowner who could just as well fold the cost into their mortgage, and that would be the simple and sensible thing to do. These homeowners don't need the county to create all this bureaucracy that requires them to pay off these charges at 5% interest over time. Combine this with the fact that in 2014, the board zeroed at the accrued guaranteed revenue fee, the AGRF, for water and wastewater capacity. The county is losing literally hundreds of millions of dollars that would otherwise be available right now and should have been available to support our water and wastewater infrastructure. Again, I'll just emphasize, no other county or city in Florida does this. And we're doing this outside the urban service area. And so that contrary to what you may have heard, developers are not funding the water and wastewater infrastructure in the rural service area as required by our comp plan. As I stated in September, we need to repeal that, this ordinance that provides for these assessment units. And so I'll be looking forward to your support in the coming year for that. But before I voted for this, which I said I'm going to vote for because we're going to put it on the tax rolls and get our money back, I just wanted to note to you my concerns about this.
Ms. Merrill, you want to address the scheme?
Yes, I need to correct the record. First of all, none of these, none of these assessment districts are outside the urban service area. They can only be used for properties that are zoned, and you only zone properties that are inside the urban service area. Second thing is, we do not, we do not act as a bank. It doesn't restrict our ability to get the cash. Whenever we need cash, we bring an item to the board and we issue assessment bonds. The assessment bonds are bought by private investors. The assessments are paid to the private investors. We get the benefit of the bond proceeds that we use to build all of the assets we need to build. So we're not a bank. We're not using taxpayer money. Developers pay impact fees either way. A developer doesn't pay impact fees and eat them. They treat development, they treat impact fees like they treat lumber and concrete and labor. It's built into the cost of the home. Developers don't pay impact fees. It's a part of the construction cost. It's the people who create the impact, the people who buy the homes, the businesses who occupy the buildings, they are the ones who create the impact. They are the ones who pay the impact fees. They either pay it as part of their cost of the home, or they pay it through the assessment. We've been using this system now for 20 years. It's worked well. It hasn't adversely affected our cash flow. It hasn't affected our credit because the county doesn't put our credit behind any of the assessment bonds. The fact that no other county does it is irrelevant. If it were a risky scheme, we wouldn't be receiving high credit ratings from the rating agencies. Our utility system is rated AAA. So I just felt I needed to correct the record because there are a number of statements that just were factually incorrect.
So having said that, this is not a quote-unquote scheme.
It's not a scheme. It's not a bank. It's not taxpayer money. And it doesn't restrict our ability to raise money when we need it to build the assets we need to build. And they're not used for properties outside the urban service area.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And I completely agree that this complicated system, if you don't want to call it a scheme, this, this system is ludicrous, and it is putting us, our citizens on the, on the hook in ways that are, they're not done in any other area. And it's, it's just crazy. But I will certainly be supporting another look at this another day. I had discussed this when this item was coming forward and also come to the conclusion that our only option here today is to vote for this, since this has been, these have gone through three other hearings, or two, this is our third hearing for this. And so this process is already going, and we have no choice but to continue doing this until we can change the process. But we really need to look at changing this process. If you look into the details of it, I think you'll find it's, it really doesn't make sense for anybody but the developers. I am interested that, to know that we're doing this outside the urban service area boundary. These properties in green certainly do seem to me to be outside the urban service area. And it's, it's not quite correct, Mr. Merrill, that we don't zone properties outside the urban service area. We certainly do. And when they are zoned outside the urban service area, and what looks to me to be that WVR2 area, or the RP2 area, they, they are required to pay for their urban services, even though they're outside the urban service area boundary. So I'm surprised to see that. And thank you very much for your research in bringing this forward so we can figure this out.
Commissioner Smith, I'm a little confused. You sound like you're supporting this, but then you second it. What are you going to do?
Right, sorry. I thought I made clear. I'm second, I had looked into this, and I don't approve of the system, and I want to change the system. But for this item, I seconded it because I agree with what Commissioner Kemp had said. Our hands are tied at this point. We have to continue collecting impact fees in this way for these items that have already been here. But I hope to be changing the system, so.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. And I'd just like to clarify, yes, thank you. We can call it a system, not a scheme, if you want, but it's a system. What, it is a, I stand by everything I described. In fact, I did very deep and explicit research. They are outside the rural service area. Millions of dollars. I did exacting research. So they're in the RP2 area outside the urban service line. There is a different, apparently, there is a different line that the, our water and wastewater system use to describe what is the rural area and what is the urban service area. So it's a different line. But in terms of what is recognized by this board as urban service area, this is outside-
These are RP2. They're in the comp plan.
It's outside the urban service area.
They're in RP2. They're, they're approved within the comp plan. You don't zone anything that's not approved in the comp plan. That's my point.
They are outside the urban service area, which is what I-
Whoa, 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 whoa. Wait a minute. We're not getting into debate on this. Mr. Merrill has made his statement. You say they're outside the service area. Mr. Merrill said they're within the comp plan, and we approved them within the comp plan. So we're not going to get in an argument about this. Done. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
I'm going to make this brief. I want, just want to thank Mr. Merrill for correcting the record. And I want to say that not only do I wholeheartedly support this system, I'm going to look to expand it to other impact fees.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Merrill.
That takes you to your 10:30 time, certain F5.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to call Dr. Curran forward. He is the chair of the Hillsborough County Healthcare Advisory Board, has been chair for, as you know, we celebrate its 25th anniversary. And I, I think it's good that he comes forward at least once a year, gives us an update on the very healthy healthcare plan. You like that? And so we, so that you understand, you know, how it's working for our citizens. It's been, we made a lot of changes this year. It's been great. It's been robust. And we have new, I will be bringing something to the board in January to either, to even make it healthier for our citizens. So thank you, Dr. Curran, and I'd like to welcome you to the board.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to be more brief than I had anticipated as you are running a bit behind. So we're going to go, and I'm not going to wing very much, but I may do a little, a reminder. The mission of the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan is to assure within available resources, underline that, the delivery of quality, underline quality, healthcare for the county's eligible medically poor residents, as well as others who lack healthcare coverage. I am reporting on behalf of the Healthcare Advisory Board and its members with their full support and in recognition of the outstanding support we receive from the staff of Hillsborough County. The annual report, and there are two of them here because of the fiscal year, it covers the period, two fiscal years, from October 1 of 2016 through September 30 of 2018. The plan in 2017's fiscal year serves 12, 703 members per month and approximately 18,000 unduplicated members for the year. The per member per month, which is one of the measures of healthcare cost effectiveness, is less than half of federally supported programs, Medicare slash Medicaid, Medicaid in particular, which is administered nationally. So we actually do a pretty good job with our community input and our partners in the community, the 31 primary care clinics, the 13 hospitals, and roughly 3,000 doctors, including the specialists. And we also provide behavioral healthcare and several statutory requirements. In that year, we saved approximately $18 million by using the Patient Assistance Program to provide our drugs and slightly more the following year. We saved, we provided to the community and its healthcare providers approximately $104 million in funding through MATCH as well as directly. And we do an annual report and review using a national measure called HEATIS, which is healthcare effectiveness, on nine indices. It is provided for us by a national organization, KPRO. And we have in those two actual reports, some very nice graphics provided by staff that show you we have improved the quality of care and our effectiveness. And in our screening programs, as well as particularly our diabetes program, where we've shown substantial improvement over recent years. The next slide is very, very simple. It basically says, we were able to provide more care to more individuals, both per month as well as the unduplicated client count for the year, and approached 20,000 lives that we touched and improved the quality of life for those citizens of our community. Again, we were less than half of what the federal government spends for an equivalent program nationally. We, we, in a year where pharmaceuticals went up about 10%, we actually saved an additional $1 million that was spent on our patients by saving through our Patient Assistance Program. We had a patient satisfaction survey. The results were incredibly good for a population that was medically poor, and both in terms of their facility acceptance, as well as their perception of the quality of the care and the quality of their life. I've told you about the HEATIS measures. We won't spend more on that. But one of the programs we're very proud of that was initiated was trying to move clients who have disabilities onto federal assistance, SSI, through what is known as the SOAR program. And we have now achieved, through outstanding work by some county employees, a turnaround time of 67 days and 85% success with our disability applications. And that then takes them off the healthcare plan role and moves them onto a federal program. So we've done very well, and we've gotten engaged in much more behavioral health and in the opioid summit and moving on from there. And the four prongs of that program is, involves education, prevention, treatment, and recovery. And we've had some wonderful community workshops in working and designing that for application in our community. The strength of our program is we're built from our community. Local makes a lot more difference than nation, than coming everything directed from Washington. We are in our 27th year. We're moving forward. We, I've talked about the SOAR program. I've talked about the HEATIS performance metrics. We really are doing very well in breast cancer screening. We really are doing very well in breast cancer screening, colorectal cancer screening, as well as cervical cancer screening, and in our diabetes program. We're very proud of our results, and we are making a difference in popular, population health in the community. It's not often said, but I'm going to do it, this could not happen without some outstanding leadership of the administration of this county, and your participation as Commissioners, and the consistent support that you, as well as some of your predecessors, have given to this program. Thank you. If there are questions, I'll try to field them. But those were the high points.
Dr. Curran, thank you very much. Now, being a three-time cancer survivor myself, early detection saves lives. Had not have been for early detection, I might not be sitting here. I know I wouldn't be sitting here right now. So, on behalf of this board, and especially me, and what you do, we're saving lives, and that's important.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I do have, first of all, thank you for all the work that you do, and it was really interesting to see the program and the highlights. I do think it's important, and you're coming at a time that's important for the public, I think, to be aware of, and I'm sure you can maybe speak to it a little. Right now, it's the open enrollment period, as I understand, for the Affordable Healthcare Act, or what is known as Obamacare, and it might be, I thought a time to let the public be aware of that also.
I'm not really engaged in that type of outreach. As you and everyone here knows, Florida has been a leader in the program in gaining outreach, and those who qualify should certainly make use of it as the deadline is coming up.
Thank you.
It extends healthcare to others who would not otherwise qualify and are not eligible for this program. All right? Thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Curran. Thank you, Healthcare Advisory Board. Thank you, Jean Early. I'll tell you what, y'all, this healthcare plan is one of the most innovative healthcare strategies of any county in our state. We are the envy of everyone, and we all owe it to Phyllis Bezansky. She was a phenomenal female leader for us. She had the vision, the foresight, and I'll move to accept the re-presentation and report from Dr. Curran.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman, to approve the, to accept the report from Dr. Curran. Again, thank you so very much, all those in favor. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Takes us to your 10:45 time certant B five.
For the record, I am Ms. Peggy Kaski. I'm the County Internal Auditor. I'm here today to present the County Internal Auditor's Annual 2020 Audit Plan. Before I begin with, with the plan, I do have some annual and periodic record-keeping that we do need to attend to, and all of these are required under the audit standards. I won't, for the sake of time, I won't go through the, the definition of internal auditing or the code of ethics, but I would like to say that my office does business partner with, with management to succeed with short-term, long-term goals, objectives. And by doing so, my office is complying with the definition of internal auditing, and I do require my staff to uphold the code of ethics. One of the requirements that I have is I do need to, on an annual basis, report back to the board and senior management that the Home Rule Charter for, Section 410 and Resolution R 17058 do comply with the definition, definition, definition of internal auditing, the audit standards, and the code of ethics. And I did do that review again this year, and I didn't identify any material concerns. So there's no action by the board at this time. This is probably one of the most important standards for this board, and standard 1100, which again, I do need to do this annually with the board, is the organizational independence statement. And basically, what it, what it says is that, that I will be providing assurance services on behalf of the board on various county function activities under the county administration. The County Internal Auditor's Office is an entity directly under the board. It is not administratively or functionally under the county administrator. And I'm the board's chief audit executive, and therefore, I do functionally report back to the board. For the nature of work, the 2020 Annual Audit Plan is designed to ensure that my office does conform with the standard. And I'll show you the plan in just a minute. The, for Resolution R 17058, what it does is it lays out the annual risk assessment and planning process, and the responsibilities of the County Internal Audit Committee. I did meet with the committee on November the 5th, and the committee reviewed the risk assessment and the annual audit plan. The committee is recommending that the board accept the plan, and that letter will, you'll see on Slide 11. Again, with the standards, the risk assessment and plan are a joint effort between the two internal audit shops, the Board of County Commissioners Audit Shop, that's mine, and then also the Clerk's Circuit Courts Audit Shop. And I think that that also is in compliance with the Resolution R 17058. So, now that we've got all that behind us, let's go ahead and talk about the plan. On the plan again this year, we have seven projects that we're carrying forward. I went through all of these with the, with each of you one-on-one. But we have seven that we're pulling forward. Most of those are in reporting stage. We have two that are a little bit earlier in the, in the process. We're adding nine new assurance projects. We also have some additional projects that are on the plan. You'll see those, we refer to them as Plan B. And then there's some other services, which I have shown there on the slide. But altogether, we're looking at about 16 projects this year, three full-time auditors. It's about 5.33 projects per person. And again, as you realize, that a lot of our audits require us to spend about 18 to 24 months between kickoff until we finish the monitoring activities. So it's not unusual for, for us to carry projects carried forward from one pro, from one year to the next. So that's what you'll be seeing here. And this is the plan. Again, we've all gone over this. If anybody has any questions, let me know. But this hasn't changed since that I met with each of you individually. The audit plan, now this is just my audit plan. You can see how it, how it provides good risk coverage. And then I've got the next slide where I'm pulling the other internal audit shop, the clerk's audit shop on top of this, and this is the merging, to show you the risk coverage for the entire county, the clerk and the board, I should say. But again, it's well-balanced on that. And here's the audit committee's recommendation. And after gain in understanding of the annual risk assessment and planning process back on November the 5th, the committee is recommending that the board accept the annual audit plan. So do you have any questions, or does the board accept the plan?
I see no questions. What's your pleasure? There's a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner White, to accept the Internal Auditor's calendar year audit plan. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Merrill.
It takes you to your last time certant, which is B one and F six. F six is Commissioner Overman's item, so turn it over to Commissioner Overman.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Board, from our Manci County Attorney's Office. Back in October, the Board directed our office to draft a resolution establishing the Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking, using Pasco County Commission on Human Trafficking as a model. The resolution before you sets forth membership composition, purpose and work of the commission, and guidelines for meetings, officers, and staff assistance. The commission will be comprised of 14 members, nine from various governmental agencies, and five from relevant segments of the community. Like your other boards and councils, this commission will be advisory in nature. This board will be asked to confirm all agency designations to the commission in the near future. Thank you, and I believe Commissioner Overman may have some brief comments. I also have Colonel Bradford here, standing and representing, I think it's item F six.
Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. I'm, I'm very excited to see this resolution move forward and welcome the creation of this commission, which will be comprised of 14 members representing segments of our community that are crucial in forming a collaborative and community-wide effort to promote awareness and education regarding human trafficking to key institutions and to the general public. I am truly grateful for our valued partners in this effort here today, to show their support in this initiative. Unfortunately, the State Attorney, Andrew Warren, had to leave. He was unable to stay. But I do welcome Colonel James Bradford, thank you very much, from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, to speak on behalf of this resolution. Colonel Bradford.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. On behalf of Sheriff Cronister and Chief Deputy Donald Lizinski, thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide some brief comments. We at the Sheriff's Office support all efforts to combat any type of human trafficking, whether it be sex or labor trafficking. Working together with our governmental and our non-governmental partners on enforcement, education, and awareness will help us achieve our collective goal to ensure Hillsborough County is a great place to live, work, and visit, especially with the upcoming events that will place our community on the world stage. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, very, very much. We truly appreciate your comments today, and the continued support of Sheriff Chad Cronister. As stated previously, there will be 14 members, with many spots specifically designated by design to specific agencies, with a vast amount of experience and knowledge to bring to this issue. I'd also like to take note that I have confirmed with county staff that two positions need to be advertised per board policy, but I will be publicly championing a special person who has been working on this for many, many years. But I'll be championing Ms. Dottie Grover Skipper, who will, unfortunately, was unable to be here today, but to be appointed as the Human Trafficking Community Advocate, which is one of the specific positions. She is interested in being part of this commission, has been working on this issue for many, many years, and I firmly believe that she would be an amazing asset to be on this membership. Mr. Chair, I'll have two motions in succession, and would like to retain the floor until both are disposed of. First, humbly, as the great, as, by the great, I'm humbled by the great challenge ahead, and optimistic of the commission's future work. So I move to adopt this resolution establishing the Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking.
Who said that? Who said? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, a second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Overman. I think this is going to be a great start. I do want to, this is a little bit off the topic, but I do want to thank Colonel Bradford. I don't know if you all know his whole history, but he used to run the Child Protective Investigator Unit at the Sheriff's Office, and did a fabulous job. And of course, now he's been promoted to Colonel, does even better job in that capacity. But yesterday, he had the first-ever meeting with his Child Protective Investigators and Ernst &amp; Young, that is designing the data entry system for, really, to prevent child abuse in our community. And I just want to publicly thank you, Colonel Bradford, because without his leadership on those issues, nothing can be done, and now on human trafficking. So you're, he's really a phenomenal asset to this community, and I do want to thank him. And then back on human trafficking, I think, and thank you for putting Dottie Grover Skipper on this. She's an incredible advocate, has been a great resource for me over the years. I do want to ask you a question. What is going to happen to all these other groups out there? Are they going to combine under this umbrella, like you've got the Free Network? I forget, there's like two or three, three or four groups of other human trafficking groups out there. And I know it's, I mean, they all do great work, but I'm hoping that this commission will kind of be the umbrella of which will oversee everything. So are you going to try and work with those other groups to fold them in?
I wouldn't survive if I didn't. Let's just, so yes, absolutely.
Good. I just, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I think it's important. Some people have brought to my attention, like the Commission on Staff and Women here in Hillsborough County. You've probably already heard those comments. And they, they would like to have an appointment, because, you know, they have a subcommittee. They would also like to be on this, this commission for human trafficking, because they've worked so hard. So if you can kind of put that in the back of your mind, I do think that they should be included on the committee because of all their work. Thank you all, and thank you for all your work on this. I know it's going to be great, and I hope you'll do a collaborative lab, because everybody tells me you need to do another collaborative lab because of the great results we got from the first one.
Understood, understood. I have been working tirelessly on this, and recognize the value of the previous collaborative lab that we did, and is on our agenda. Part of the reason why we need a commission is so that we have more folks at the table than just my office. And we have been working really hard on, on creating the framework for just exactly that. So I do want to say thank you for all the work that you've done to bring this forward, and acknowledge the work that you've done, along with Dottie, because she and Connie and a whole bunch of folks, the whole Free Network, have all worked very, very hard at this. So, given that, I would like to also, need to vote, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Sorry. Okay.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I noticed that on this commission, at the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office and the Tampa Police Department would have a seat at the table. Did you engage the Temple Terrace and Plant City Police Departments?
Not specifically. I have not experienced them being at the table in this conversation, given the resources they had. They certainly would not be excluded. But having an official position on it, we had not considered that.
Ms. Beck, I guess I would just need to ask you, I mean, that, to give them an official seat at the table, I would assume that the resolution here would have to be amended, but then I'd certainly want to know whether or not they would like to have a seat at the table, though.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but certainly if that was something that the board was interested in, we could always come back and amend the resolution.
Okay. And there's, and there's also been talk within the human trafficking advocacy, anti-human trafficking advocacy community, about perhaps having a human trafficking survivor on this commission. I don't know if that's come up, as you've been doing your work on this, or something you've considered, or...
They're not precluded, but on item H, the community victim services as designated by redefining refuge typically would, would, that could be served by, that position could be served by that appointment.
Okay. So...
It doesn't preclude it. Let me put it that way.
So I don't want to be a party pooper, or the commissioner that reigns on your parade. This is good work that you've done. So I'm going to go ahead and support the item, but Commissioner Overman, Ms. Beck, Mr. Merrill even, I'm going to ask that the three of you work together and see if Temple Terrace and Plant City Police Departments would like to have a seat at the table. And if so, you know, to bring a proposed amendment back to the board that would, that would add them in. I mean, they're, you know, they're municipalities in their own right. I mean, if we're going to include Tampa with an automatic seat at the table, it's only fair that we engage those two smaller municipalities. And I particularly think about Plant City because of the agricultural community there, and, you know, it's, you know, when you talk about forced labor and trafficking, I mean, you know, that's certainly something to think about. So, you know, I would ask that you, that you do that, and, I mean, if you're going to be doing that anyway, maybe look at the, whether or not we would want to formally include a survivor as well. include a survivor as well. I'm thinking if Temple Terrace and Plant City say yes, if you agree to include a survivor as well, that would mean that an amendment would come back to add three new positions. I kind of like the idea of having an odd number of commissioners on this commission for voting purposes. So, you know, that could really be, be big.
A way of accomplishing that.
So, but I'm going to go ahead and support the item today, because we want to get this moving along and, and get it created. But I would ask that Commissioner Overman, if you'd be so kind as to work with staff to see if those, those additional three stakeholders are something we'd want to consider.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Well, in that case, then, I do think the Commission on Staff and Women should have a representative, the one for Hillsborough County should have a representative on this group, because the extensive work. So if you all wouldn't mind adding that to your list of people you look at to be a member of this group, and then I guess you would come back with an amendment. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Murman, to adopt a resolution establishing the Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Overman, you recognize?
Great. Thank you very, very much for the support. I truly appreciate it. As I mentioned earlier, we've been working pretty hard on this. And there, there are a lot of folks at the table, and that's, that's the best part. There was not a specific decision not to include the other law enforcement, although I had not seen them at the, at the regional district meetings, but if they wanted to come at the table, I don't see why we wouldn't want to make that happen. I'd also, would I ask, and would be honored to sit on this commission as the, as the member from the B O C C, and would appreciate a motion appointing me to the commission.
Motion by Commissioner Higgins, second by Commissioner Smith, so I'm sorry, Commissioner Kemp, to appoint Commissioner Overman to the Human, Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking Committee. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. Ms. Merrill.
Okay.
That does, that completes all of our time certants.
Yes, that takes care of time certants.
It is 12:20, and we still have a little work to do. Members would you like to break for lunch or continue to work? Okay. Well, well, you're outnumbered, buddy. You're outnumbered. We're going to break for lunch until 1:30. We're setting a recess to 1:30.